We're here to talk about original town and what we think it can do to source improvements there to try to make it a fair place for everybody that has a part in that community. Before I begin anything at all, there are two things I'd like to make a comment on. One, I'd like to thank the community church for allowing us to be in their facility, whatever beautiful facility it is, and then also like to thank Linda Hillman for the cookies that she brought back there and the coffee, etc. So, thank you both. That was considered. Well, you can back that up right here. This will be a regular meeting some way as a workshop meeting, and therefore, the official date today is March 20th. It's approximately 6:00 PM. We're at the community church in Borough Beach, and we will start with our preliminary matters, agenda, and the brief adoptions to the meeting today. Are there any? Seeing none, we move on to public comments. Public comments in time generally ahead of time. If you have something to comment about that we not necessarily germane to what we're talking about today, somebody who's come to frame before this board today, and if you would like to, you can do that now. You also have the opportunity under this same criteria to start your conversation right now immediately on what we're going to talk about in the workshop, but there'll be a separate public opportunity for you to speak shortly that will be, everybody who's speaking then will probably be on that subject, okay? So, if anybody would like to come forward and have something they'd like to say, you can use the podium to my left, okay? And I believe, because I'm not familiar with this gag either, there's one up there.
Do you drop something now? My name is Judy Jones. I'm on 2, 16, 19th Avenue, and I'm here to get support. I hope for the community and this neighborhood, plus for you to do something about the apartment complex across from me. Here's police articles. Some of them have been busted over there with cocaine, drugs, nothing really just been done. We just had a grand theft lady living over there. I don't know what's going to happen to her. They also have a lady over there that walks, ran and ran our block. I've come home, found her on my porch smoking, cigarette butts all over my porch, nothing's done. She's got fancy. We've had to change our school bus route in the corner here to right next to Linda's house, causing problems there. It's just getting to be a nuisance. I'm getting scared to live there by myself. Something's going to be done. We recently had some evictions over there where boys had dogs. She's running loose, but that was against city property. I have a broken bone on the bottom of my back. They ran loose, jumped right on my back. The police come, nothing is done. What can we do to get help?
Two, the initial comment, although the board's going to speak, is that this board, unless it's a, this board cannot help you in most cases unless there's a zoning violation or something.
Okay, but out of the shoe flats next door to it, how does he get away from his storage in a residential neighborhood?
Have you?
I follow the better replies.
I'm going to let Tim as our official expert here, so may I?
And Tim, if you could explain the difference between planning zoning and code enforcement, what might be used?
Well, the planning zoning really deal with setting the framework of regulations as well as the review of projects that come in according to the regulations, and also setting policy for the ladies' plan and that, or regulating policy to the city council. In your situation brought up here, I'll have my staff, I'll talk to the city manager and the police department. If they're doing storage, that would probably be a violation if they don't. When I say probably, I don't know what level of storage is being done. We'll look into that. If you would, I'll give you my card, just send me.
I'm not sitting down, nobody can find.
Well, have you talked to my code people?
I don't, I didn't hear.
Well, just, I will bring that up and see what we can do. That's all I can say, and we'll investigate. Some of the things are just neighbors being bad neighbors, other things that are violations of the code, and we'll see what we can do about that. Fair enough?
It's fair for me though, but it's not fair for these kids. It's already here in the dark waiting for a bus, but now they have to worry about these people.
I understand.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak now? Please come forward. Please give your name and your address when you might think I identified them, please.
My name is John Chapman. I'm a fairly new owner. I've been in my property for a year and three months, and I moved in the house, it was a, it was a code in the house. It's cost me over $20,000 to re-up this house. It was on 18th Avenue, 2356, 18th Avenue, and it was the red front house with the brick. It's not very thick anymore because it stood out like a sword thumb. It's like painted white. But anyway, I noticed, and I used to live, my previous address was right on the corner of 23rd Street and 18th Avenue. It was a rental, but I decided to buy, and I thought the house was great, I had work needs to be done, I could do it, and went to it. Well, I had a drug problem across the avenue from me on 23rd Street and 18th Avenue, a brown house that faces 17th Avenue or 23rd Street. It was a drug dealer in his cottage, in fact. So, I bought a very expensive, very useful surveillance system, video surveillance, and I put it to use. I found out later that I couldn't use any of my tapes and over to the police department because of the fact I had no warning sign that I was video taken. I did not have all over my house, brought back inside, and it runs 24/7, and it definitely worked 24/7. I noticed since I put those signs up that all of a sudden, all the drug dealers had kind of moved away because they used to go through the alleys, and the whole area has quieted down quite a bit on 18th Avenue. I'm not talking 19th Avenue because I know because I'm there. That's a problem, one lot away from me, and I don't see it on a regular basis. But the problem is, as I mentioned, and lastly, landlords are absentee. Landlords rent these places out, especially for hood housing and whatnot, and do no check up on the types of people that they're renting to. Consistently will have this problem until something is done about landlords not checking up on their tenants, not taking care of their properties, whether the grass die out or grass over grow to the point that it's knee-high. These does things by themselves, tell them the tenants, well, landlord doesn't care, why should we? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else would like to speak?
I've got your question. Is this a time to talk about these maps or has that come up later?
Well, I believe we'll be into that significantly a little later on, sir. This is the first one for myself. I'm also learning this particular procedure, who does work, so help prepare with me. Tim McGary, head of planning, without giving a little presentation, just to kind of get us oriented for where we're going to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out our mayor is here, Mayor Weiner, and I believe Councilwoman Amelia Graves is helping. Tonight, the intent of this workshop is to get input and comments from the public and from the board on the draft, comp plan, and, we would like to also receive further directions if there would be some tonight from planning zoning board. This is the first step of one process which will require further workshops, at least one public hearing before the planning zoning, and at least two hearings before the city council before they can be adopted. It also is going to require further investigation and evaluation by the staff, and this is just the first step in this whole thing. So, for people not to get too excited with what they read there, this certainly is a document that can be further worked on, but the whole intent here is to get your comments and input, and that's what we're trying to do tonight. I'm going to try to keep my presentation short and just deal with the specifics of some of the amendments, but first, before I do that, I think it'd probably be good for those who aren't aware, just to go on, to give a little background of how we got to where we are here, and the city's been through a long process on this, and this all started with the adoption of vision plan back in 2005. And for those who are not familiar, the vision plan is very strong on reinforcing Borough Beach as a community of neighborhoods by developing strategies for neighborhood conservation, preservation, and neighborhoods revitalization and stabilization. This was followed up to 2009 when the city council adopted the original town neighborhood strategies. We're also doing one for Osceola Park, and this, these plans were done at the request of the neighborhoods. The document, the original town document was prepared with the help of the neighborhood, which came in several of the meetings, and called various strategies and actions to stabilize this served neighborhood. We have it on our website if you're interested in seeing it, if you need to do that, we also have hard copies in our office. During the same process, we also had a historic survey done of our, of the properties here, and we've included a map showing the eligible properties that could be designated in your, you got those synopsis packages in there, so she's getting the background package. In 2010, the council adopted the staff evaluation appraisal report, and what they, these kind of documents are, basically, they're what a municipality or county is supposed to, in reviewing this plan every so often, five to seven years, to update the plan, and the year that was adopted by the council, basically called for various actions will be done to update the plan, and one of the significant proposals in that evaluation appraisal report called for the incorporation of specific objectives and policies for original town as well as for Osceola Park, and that's why you see us going through this exercise now. All these policy documents recognize the historic intrusion expansion of non-residential uses into our historic areas, including abandonments of right-of-way and the disconnections of our, the grid pattern, the historic grid pattern that was in this area, and the elimination of residences. And I believe in the white paper, I alluded to over 70 residents have been lost since 1960s, looking at the maps. All of the Great Recession has put a halt, and I can tell you, a developer view and a lot of these conversions, now that the economy heating up, we still believe there is concern in this neighborhood, and clearly, your attendance here shows there is a strong interest in doing something, and the problems pointed out by the lady and gentleman just before me pretty well clearly states what you, some of the issues that happen in these kind of neighborhoods where you're trying to stabilize and conserve. With this historically consistent city policy, which has been adopted by the council over the seven years, calling for the protection, stabilization of historic intercity neighborhoods, their staff did prepare this white paper, which I hope somebody who had an opportunity read, it was on our website, and basically, it provides a brief overview of the neighborhood. It's not really in-depth, but it tries to get at some of the issues, and it also provides some of the data and supporting analysis required. When you go through a planning process, the Florida statute's required that you do the analysis to provide rationale and the framework of why you're proposing certain amendments. So, what I'd like to do now is just briefly go through the objectives I gave you. Those who didn't want to read the whole policies, we do have a synopsis that just puts it in a few words what basically is trying to be done in that policy. First is the objective, that here's the earlier policy document that established the stabilization of the historic neighborhood by encouraging development, redevelopment along with public investment that preserves and enhances neighborhood, limiting further intrusion into capital and residential uses. As I said, every document that's come out of the city since I've been here and even before I was here, basically called out for this kind of preservation and stabilization, protect these historic resources for the city. And I think part of what this objective does recognize, and it's implied that there's a central need to provide also a regulatory framework that encourages infill and development to provide incentives for this stabilization and investment in the neighborhood that's compatible with the existing historic nature of this oldest of the city's for our neighborhoods. Policy 11.1, and we have, this sets the boundaries of the original town, so we set up a policy framework, we need to define generally the geographic area to help us with that, and the boundaries of this, I have a copy that has shown, it was in the white paper, we have the synopsis, and it's basically, it was based, it was based on the citizen's zipbook while we were doing the strategies document back years ago. This is what the neighborhoods defined as their neighborhood, and basically, it's bounded by 26th Street in the north, state route, 60th on the south, 15th Avenue to the east, and 28th Avenue to the west, so that's the general boundaries of that. 11.2 recognized the original town association as a contact with the city. Now, this isn't an exclusive thing, but the city, to do its job and work with the stakeholders committee, we'd like to have contacts that we can inform them what's going on, getting help to coordinate that. For instance, Linda Hillman's organization, I sent out letters and invitation to everybody to help coordinate this wonderful facility along with the community church. So, I mean, this is the kind of things to do because it's, it's going to take the neighbors who work together, and the city would like to be working with people rather, the groups of people rather than individuals coming in with their own agendas that may not necessarily be what the neighborhood wants, but it doesn't preclude other organizations coming forward. We're not trying to, this isn't any lift, it's just a task, we just need to be able to work on various groups. Policy 11.3, states that the city will not approve further petition for road abandon by private prop owners. To start with the past, we've had numerous, not numerous, we've had several major abandonments of streets which have disconnected parts of the neighborhood. This basically states a policy that the city will not do this. It doesn't preclude the city from doing itself, wanting to petition when there's a need to do it for city purposes, but in this case, when we have, it basically states that the city will not support these kinds of abandonments. Policy 11.4, and this is where we get into the intrusion of non-residential uses, and this, we're not getting to areas that are probably much more, shall we say, controversial than your typical comp plan policy. This makes it more difficult to approve rezoning, residential zoning property to non-residential. And primarily, we're concentrating on areas more of the 22nd Street because when you look at the map, and we showed the uses, you can see that most of the blue and the red is, they're all to south of there. Doesn't mean we're not trying to protect other existing residential uses, but it is, I think, an important caveat to make it more difficult. It doesn't preclude these kind of rezonings, it just adds to the criteria, we do specify some criteria there. And one thing we may want to look at is probably not in the element itself of the policy, maybe generalize it a little more because for us to do any of this kind of thing, if you go through the comp plan, but it still has to go through a land development regulation through the ordinance, and that is a multi-step process with hearings, and so, I don't want to, there may be any factors that come up that we wouldn't see in a comp plan that we need to address more fully when we do a regulatory framework, and that's where people who are, let's put it this way, are more knowledgeable of zoning than they are of comp plan, what a comp plan is. So, I think we may change the language slightly just to look at that, and this would, this should help us, help in one way, we haven't had a lot of, we do get requests for these kind of rezonings, and we generally say we're not going to pay very look at them, and usually if the staff says that to somebody, they have to say, and that's kind of difficult to do, they usually back off on it, but that doesn't mean they don't have a right to submit it, so we need to have some firm policy, a firm policy if you think of it, please. 11.5, and here's another one which is, that may bring some comment. Commitment to the city to consider adopting an overlay district for the same area, for the area between 22nd and 25th Streets by January 2015 that prohibits the expansion of new conditional uses or expansion of existing conditional uses in vacant residential lots, trying to prevent further fragmentation of the neighborhoods and loss of residents and residential population. There would be some exceptions to this, we have parks and recreation, public utilities, we're also considering maybe cultural activities, we'll have to look at that, because it's not set, again, we may want to be a little more general. There are a couple of ways to do that because it does affect, the intent was that in the past, we've had a lot of other things larger, and the community churches one, I'm not going to pick on, but they, you know, we've talked about it, and the Methodist Church, and they have expanded into the neighborhoods, and it is, they're great, they're good uses, but they are removing their residential uses and they're disconnecting, so we have to get to a point where so much, you know, you can only take so much of the neighborhood if you want to retain the historic residential neighborhood. So, I think that's something to consider, and it would be, we put a long process in there, because a lot of discussion will have to take place. I don't know if we have a strong support to go toward with this, that's, so that six month period or seven month period is what's going to be up to go through that process. Policy 11.6 establishes a continued step process procedures for overlay district threats and regulations that provided a fine process for evaluating the need and rationale for additional regulations. And a point that was brought up in the vision plan, the vision plan called for overlays in the neighborhood. The problem that got in there is they didn't put any caveats on it, and they basically required a supermajority of property owners to approve. Well, you get to a point where that gets to be almost a veto in some areas, and it may not be in the public interest. So, what we felt, the staff felt, a better way was just set a process up, we go through a process of, say, we get a recommendation or a request from the neighborhood that shows that we've got a bunch of properties that are interested in this, we look at it, go through the planning and zoning board, or you do it by staff or the city council. City council didn't make a decision at that point where they want the staff to spend the time and the resources to go forward on this, and we don't have a big staff, so that's, I'm trying to protect my staff and myself on this too, and we don't want to overcommit, we want to be sure that there's anything to be adopted, not only has general support for the community and my, and the city council, but we have a staff resource, a financial resource to come through and do a good job to do this. So, I think that's an important process, that I think that would go well, and it's got a lot of safeguards in it, and it's got a lot of, it's transparent because a lot of people have an opportunity, so it won't be something done behind closed doors. Now, one area in the white paper that I did bring up in the policy document, and I just want to bring it up because I think it's very important, I think the need for an inter, for an intercity neighborhood next to the downtown is important, but that intercity neighborhood must have a good, a dense enough residential population to be, to be self-sustaining as well to support the downtown, and to be a place that people want to move to, and provide investment, and we heard about the problems with keeping up. Well, there needs to be some, you know, carrots and flexibility in this to do that, so I think we need to look at some, focus on how we can do increased development and redevelopment because the existing zoning right now, in my opinion, after reviewing it and working with it, makes it really difficult for residential infill, and we need more opportunities so investors can come in and do investments and put in good residential development. That is consistent with our historic framework, and we do have, we've had, our historic survey was done, Anna Brady did a great job, we've got patterns of what would be acceptable in the neighborhood that could be worked into any kind of overlay on that. I think when you look at the ordinance, we allow 10 units an acre, and this is an example. However, if you have a single family, to have a single family house, you have a 10,000 square foot block where you can do the math. It doesn't really equate to the density you really need to have. This is, you can't have a single family house, but why are you requiring, there were reasons it was done that time in the past. I think we need to look at it, I'm not, I'm just saying, you need to do kind of things with the mill mill to do that. And the other further complication we have is numerous, not conforming laws, that's what I'm saying, that's something. And that also hinders reinvestment for people, makes it more difficult for them to put money in it, because they reach a certain threshold that they have to comply, and it's very difficult where they can't do it, so we need to look at that. So, staff thinks there needs to be some further tweaking and flexibility, looking at these incentives, and working with the community and stakeholders to come up with something, and I think we may want to consider a policy in the document. I think it's important enough, but we'll see if we have people that feel, excuse me, that I do on this. Policy 11.7, this is assigned in a important role to the Historic Preservation Commission to help in this. They've been very active and they're very interested in this, and they'll be involved in this, and part of their role is to educate people on historic preservation, as they provide them some guidance on what they can do with their properties. The last policy is really the catch-all, basically incorporates many of the suggested actions in the adopted strategy, Neighborhood Enhancement Strategies Document, such as neighborhood improvements, traffic calming, looking at grant programs, the Neighborhood Watch program with the police department, neighborhood signage, Osceola's just put in a historic sign that they got, park, so, I mean, we look at that, look at code enforcement issues, and that certainly is on everybody's mind all the time, look at public service issues, and also the transit issues, which we were involved in when the hub was causing so many problems. So, hopefully that gives you a briefing on that, and Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, unless you have a specific question, maybe that we might want to open up a public comment.
I would agree with that. The board, does the board agree with the public? We would like to now open up those public comments. How many people would like, expect to speak this evening? You raise your hand, Mr. Johnson. One, two, three, four, five, six, 10, 12, all right? And may I ask one other question I'd like to, are you a resident of original town? I think I would like to include that. Some of the addresses catch me off guard because I don't know whether they're in or out, so if you're, because I see a couple from Osceola on the other side, and so, let me know if you're, if you're not part of original town or you are, okay? And I'll start. Who would like to be first, your hands going up, raise your hand. Linda, please give your name and address also.
Good evening, Linda Hillman, 2315 18th Avenue, and I am a resident of original town. First, I'd like to thank again the community church for allowing us to meet here. It's a beautiful place to meet, and it's taken the original town a long time to meet with the community church, so I'd like to tell a thank you. And I want to thank everyone who did show up, and it's not as big a turnout as I wanted it to be after sending out all of the letters to all of the stakeholders and residents, but it's a bigger turnout than what we've had before prior to this. I want to thank Tim and Sherry for all the work that they've done on this, it's absolutely wonderful, so, thank you again. And I want to thank all the people who are renters also, i.e. Mr. Wilson for coming in, all the other people who are not just in original town, thank them for coming up to this. I didn't expect to stand up here and talk, but I know there's a lot of concerns, issues that are still happening in the neighborhood. I know Mr. Mutcher has an issue with being called neighborhood association, but we are a neighborhood association. We are not a registered neighborhood association, we are not a tax-exempt neighborhood association. We are an association of concerned neighbors, and without us coming forward to the city about issues that are concerning our neighborhood, we would probably see a more lighted neighborhood than what we have now. There are homes that we consider need to be taken care of. We don't have any intention of telling stakeholders, property owners, landlords, what to do with their properties, but it should be beneficial to them as well as to the homeowners who do live in original town, that if they were to be more caring, more aware of their homes, then they not only would bring their value of their property, the value of the neighborhood, but also the value of their tenants would certainly improve, and there wouldn't be as many concerns, not in just our neighborhood, but other neighborhoods. In my opinion, if you purchase a property for investment reasons, that would be a bigger reason why you would want to keep your property looking good and valuable because it is your investment. I had four homes, three of them in original town. I had four homes, three of them in original town, within blocks of each other. We took care of them ourselves. We took care that properties looked good and were up cat, that they were polished, painted. And we did bring in wonderful tenants, some who are still living in a duplex that we sold several years ago because of the neighborhood, because of the concern that we had at that time for our property. It's very important for investors to know that it's not just the people on the outside that own and are looking at the way their property looks. It's the neighborhood in itself. We welcome excuses in our neighborhood. And as you can see from this map, there's a very small residential area left that is pure residential. There, there's a lot of blues, as Tim says, there's a lot of reds. And original town was much bigger than what it is now. We're trying to preserve what we have, the character of the historic. It's the original city of Bear Beach. That's what we have here. And if no one wants to take care of it, if no one wants to notice it, if no one wants to be proud of the original town of Bear Beach, I'd like to know why. I'd like to know what their concern is, why they feel that we're trying to close out the investors, why they feel we're trying to control the investors. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to keep the property, keep the historical aspects of this city. That's what I'm trying to do. And I don't have anything else. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer it. But again, we're not a registered neighborhood association, Mr. Mutcher, but we are a very concerned association of neighbors. And we want to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, Mr. Chairman.
Linda, I think you raised my concern fairly. I guess I'd asked you why you don't legitimize your association.
I would say four years ago, we did have an association. I being a resident, there was a board, we had a secretary, we had a vice president, we had a treasurer. We also still have a bank account that is dwindling because the treasurer moved out of town. And although I am on the books to sign the checks, I am not the treasurer. So in order to take over what remains of that checking account, the treasurer has to turn it over directly to me. I've written letters. She is still a property owner here. She has not answered any of my letters, not answered any of my emails. So monthly, we are taking ten dollars out of that banking account, which is left of the association. And pretty soon there won't be anything. We had close to eleven hundred dollars, I believe. We're down to less than two hundred dollars in that account. We were an association every two months. And there are neighbors here that can verify that I had a meeting in my yard over concerns that were happening. And eventually, people became discouraged because of issues that were happening. Going to the city, nothing was done. You go to code enforcement, not enough people, nothing was done. And the discouragement came to the point where every time I had a meeting, I could see one or two more people were off that list who were interested in me. So to answer your question, we did have a large association at one point. Thirty-two neighbors would show up. And now I might have eleven neighbors who are still concerned and still will back me up and help me with any issues. I can only send out letters as I've done. I can only ask the city to notice meetings. I cannot force people to be a part of the neighborhood if in fact, the only thing they're looking for is the money that goes in their pocket or anything else. And in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, this is what is happening. The investors are only looking at what they can get out and not what they can put in to help this neighborhood survive.
This may surprise you, but I personally think you're doing a great job. But I'm just concerned about the legality, the legitimacy. I can't imagine how, maybe it was a long time ago, a bank opened an account in the name of an association that didn't exist. And if we as, as the arm of the city are going to mention the name of an association as contact for this kind of thing, I just think that it shouldn't exist. And I understand it's a lot of trouble. I just went through it myself.
It's not a lot of trouble for me, Mark, because I've done it all, I've done it all on my own. All I've asked, all I've ever asked, people to show up and have their input as I've asked for this meeting here. And as, as you can see, out of a hundred and thirty-seven letters that I have sent out, this is what shows up.
I understand all that and I don't want to beat this to death. And as I said, I think you're doing a great job as, as a group of neighbors. But I'm just concerned about.
The legality. And I do understand that. I'm, I'm concerned about that too, but my hands are tied. I've done just about everything I possibly can do. I followed everything that Mr. Gary has asked me to do right down the line. I still can't force people to come and be a part of it. All I can do is ask the people who are concerned with what is left of this historic city or neighborhood, please come forward. And that's all I can do. I thank you all.
Thank you, Linda. Any other questions, Linda? Next person, one, two.
Before you start, Kim, I have a question. Are there any statistics available, you know, in planning about neighborhoods in similar situations where you're looking for the stakeholders to participate in your meetings because you want to stabilize the neighborhood? But the stakeholders don't want to participate until the neighborhoods are stabilized. Are there any, you know, any statistics in that regard at all?
I'm sure there are of some sort, but I, you know, I think that the question brought up is very germane. Some cities have certain requirements before they even recognize an neighborhood association. I mean, it's something that can be done here. I think I'm looking at this way in Linda's situation. I mean, she is a galvanizing neighbor. It isn't like we're handing them any real power here. I mean, we're basically making them a contact. She's bringing things before us. She's helping to bring this meeting, getting people interested together. So we're not saying that, you know, I don't think it's, that's why I didn't think it was that important. I think our biggest priority is getting people involved.
I remember these earlier meetings and I remember all the people that were there. And yeah, during that, the numbers have dwindled. But you see that as community participation all over the place. And I was just curious whether you've seen a resurgence of that once you see, you know, neighborhood's kind of like stabilized or revitalized, more people are interested. Okay, thank you.
Tom Chapman, K-356, Eighteenth Avenue. As far as zoning is concerned, I see a lot of problems in our area. We have landowners that do not follow zoning as far as how many people are living in a residence. There's two within one block that is overpopulated as far as zoning is concerned. There's one that I think is right next to me that's on Twenty-Fourth Street. It was a two-family residence, it'll be separate, but same building with two separate entities. And the landlord took the model themselves to take a mudroom, basically what you would call a mudroom on the side of the building that was originally there, and a carpetboard, and turned it to another apartment. And it's no cooking, no refrigeration, just a room and bathroom. And I did look it up in zoning and it is not zoned for that. And I do know that the landlord, I'm not gonna say it right now, but the landlord has done this to also other properties, but no consideration for zoning whatsoever. There's another problem they have with zoning in the area of Old Town. People will subdivide these houses and turn them into more tiny units without getting bearings.
May I ask you this question? Have you identified that code enforcement? And what was their response to you?
We'll get around to it.
I think that needs to be brought to somebody else's attention than if that's not the case. But Tim has something to say he's trying to get to.
I'll look into that, but that isn't the standard response I would expect from my staff. And I don't think that's it. I think the problem is some of these cases, we can't get into that house and it's difficult for us to prove a case. And a lot of times we'll have a case ongoing and they just don't have a resolution. But if you would give me the addresses, I will certainly look into them.
Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know that this is a zoning problem per se. The whole area, is my understanding, is on RM ten twelve.
Mostly.
And this is more of a code, it's more a code type issue. And it wasn't, we wouldn't change the zoning, in other words, to either accommodate or to prosecute this kind of activity. The zoning is what it is and it doesn't allow certain uses and things. But if someone goes outside those bounds, then it becomes a code enforcement thing. And again, not a planning zone issue.
Yeah, we have, we also have a standard housing code and that tells you how many people live in that. So again, we have to have evidence, meaning generally we have to have access to that activities. So these, these are, these are difficult sometimes to do, but we work on it and sometimes they take a lot of resolve, so.
You know, I'd like to comment to you if I could. You have to become your own activist if you have a problem. And the closer it is to your own home, the more of an activist you will become. And it, you know how to help you get, Jimmy. You have to go back and back and back again until you become an advocate and then it'll be taken care of. And you spoke about this evening, it's followed up until you're satisfied. Sometimes the people feel like, we feel like they're getting in the way of government, but really they are the reason we have government is to support and protect people like yourself. And if it's wrong, it should be identified and corrected. It's not wrong, it's something else. And sometimes myself as a resident, I find I'm barking up the wrong tree. The law doesn't agree with me and I'm trying to make my own law for myself, but that's what I want it to be. So you have to be cautious of that when you're out there in your neighborhood because a lot of times you're not on the right side of the law. And it, it sounds like the wealthy already help you, but they can't in some cases. And I know that personally.
Well, I'm just keep sticking my face out there and keep putting my two cents right there. Maybe one of them figured out a way to.
Next person would like to speak, please come forward.
My name's Billy Wagner and I live in McCann's Park, but I'm right on Twentieth Avenue. So I don't know, McCann's Park is no further distance from downtown than Osceola Park or Old Town. But we, apparently you can't zone anything PO somehow, we have that protection. Although I think some of the people living on Route sixty, they don't like the noise. They probably like to turn around and make a problem, turn the offices. But anyway, we have that protection already in place. My concern is when Tim was talking about the catch-all policies at the end, he didn't mention traffic calming. But Twenty-third Street here is just a raceway because people coming south of US one, if they want to go west on Route sixty, they have no choice but to turn onto Twenty-third Street and race through the neighborhood, go around the park and zoom down by the catheters and then go out. So go both ways. It's because there's no way to go west on Route sixty coming south down on US one. That's why. And I had Twentieth Avenue changed to twenty-five miles an hour. When they did the rest of the city, they forgot my street. And I had to call the MPO. I found out that Twentieth Avenue is a, is considered a connector, but it's also a residential road, which means it's a residential road. It cannot exceed thirty miles an hour, but there's no minimum speed limit. So I hadn't changed to twenty-five, which didn't do any good because the police are not coordinating the city. And the city thought that would solve the problem, but the police told me, we don't get tickets unless they're over ten miles over the speed limit, which makes the de facto speed limit thirty-five. So we'd have to actually close speed limit signs at fifteen to get the neighborhood to twenty-five. And the city, you know, they're not, they don't talk to each other, I don't know why. So I'm going to get traffic calming, we need traffic calming, all the neighborhoods need traffic calming. And because people are just trying to get to point A or point B, they don't care. They just fly, they flip me the finger, they do everything. I'm just trying to go home. So I asked about traffic calming, different, oh, it costs so much money. You'd have to pay out of your own pocket. I would have to pay to do the traffic calming in Twentieth Avenue, I think that's ridiculous. The items you'd have to purchase are not that expensive. And I, you know, they sent me the brochure and I looked in it and some of the things, the flashing thing that shows your speed limit, they're not that expensive and they're movable. And, and they work in Miami because I'm all over Miami and it says, you are going too fast. And people really, they work, they're ninety-five percent effective. I just heard a story on Monday. They're ninety-five percent effective. Ninety-five percent of people's speeding will slow down if you have the, they show what speed you're going. And then, but in Miami, if you reach too high a speed, it says, you're going too fast. That really works. So I, I would like traffic calming to become part of the policy.
May I ask you this question? I have presence, obviously I'm in that neighborhood somewhat myself. I never noticed a need for traffic calming. I really didn't feel that way. So I'm going to ask the people here, just by a show of hands, so we get, as a board, we get a feeling for it. Is that one of the issues we need to talk about is traffic calming? So we see most people agree with that. So I'm surprised in that case because I didn't realize that. I, I know I go through the community, I'm relatively, relatively still slow, I stop, stop signs. So, so there's more of an issue than I thought and we haven't really touched.
Well, it's in, it's in the policy. And I want to point out the city has adopted a traffic calming program. So it's a, it's a step program that Public Works Department's handled. And certainly on the request of the neighborhood, they will look into it. They have to do speed studies and a few other things. But I don't know if that's been done on this road. I certainly would be willing to talk to Ronnie Falls at our Public Works Department and see that. But we do have a program that was approved by the city council.
Do we feel that most of the problems, people, is a cut through? Or is most of the problem that they're exceeding the speed limit or not following non-stopping and stuff? What is the?
All of the above.
All of the above. I, I do, unlike me in that area. Somebody else would like to speak next, please? Next person?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments on respective ones.
Could you please give your name, Ed, if you live in original town?
I do, on Campbell Branch, and I live at twenty-three fifty nineteenth Avenue, which used to be the road right behind you. Used to go right, right through that big blue square that they were sitting inside of. And that was really what galvanized the group some years ago. And it was the same issue, the alimony petition and not very comfortable with a lot of people. They don't want to vote against the church. But we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Linda helping and Vicki. Good guy, you might like. Oh, Vicki, whoa, really. And I'm kind of surprised we aren't here after all these years of silence. And, but we're here, I approach it to some citizens. I like this map, I was very much a parkland. The boundary's on this map. But I want to, I want to remind everybody that might not know, the original town subdivision extends far beyond that square. It goes on the other side of US one. This was really considered the heart. So I also approach it to some citizens and when I hear that anything south of Twenty-second Street is open for grabs, maybe. I know you're saying no, but that's. I know you're saying no, but that's what we heard, that's what we heard. And if you see that little orange square that's just north, just south of the church, that's the condominiums that the community church owns a lot of. I think, I think sometime we're gonna be revisiting, knocking those down for, for those kinds of purposes. I think all of that square should be saved on US-1. Number two, I like the map a lot, it really says a lot. And the yellow really is the only residential. And right in the middle of the big map is that one square of yellow, that's the only one that's all residential. And that's why this kind of map development has became a heart. Couple of other things I noticed is if you go down 18th Avenue, there's a road missing down through that big blue square. And it shouldn't be, as a matter of fact, you should make two wings all the way through both parts of it. It's the old hospital property and now when you come up through it, you gotta go around. I mean, I'm still a little bit, who lives today, that I can't go straight down 19th Avenue, 19th Avenue. Before the last expansion, there used to be an easement going down through the middle of that. I think that easement went away with the last expansion. But the expansion before that, they gave them the zoning improvements to take over what they took over, but they kept the easement going right through where 19th Avenue used to go. And then the last expansion, that disappeared and was never really possible. And it's gone. I also noticed over on 15th Avenue, there's three residential squares. Right down there, right down there between 24th and 23rd, that's a parking lot that's used by the first actist. There's nothing there. I think they would love to get that, it's been parking lot for many years. Okay? Can you see the squares I'm talking about? Between 23rd and 24th. On the east side. I don't know what kind of incentives planning and zoning can bring for the future to incentivize the little red squares in a lot of the corners of a lot of the blocks to become residential here. I mean, the one there, it's right over there on the left-hand side, it just marks where we are. That's just, it's a, it could be residential very easily, because it's still a residential building, the structure itself is not. But he's in there, he's in there as a, I think, I don't know, it's a doctor or a. Nothing gets him doing what he's doing there, but if there was something to incentivize these people so that they would give up, sell their, their rights to continue as that, so if they leave, then it will back to, to incentivize people to turn it back to residential. Or all the orange, there's a lot of orange, those people could be incentivized to develop into condominiums where there's residential. I think that's good for the downtown, the more residential can get into that square, the better it's gonna be for fiber downtown. But there's gotta be reasons why one of the highest, best use has to be something more than what's there right now. And I don't think there's ways to incentivize that kind of behavior, but that's what I would do. And I would, going back to the beginning, I'd like to say, to look at all of original towns so we don't forget that this is just a piece of it. When the original town subdivision was made, called the original town subdivision, because that was planted, that was the first subdivision that Warren Ziner had developed when the trains came through and they were selling. And it was just a dirt road down US-1 and it was residences on both sides, the big square. I think that all should be recognized, this is just the part that's the heart of it and made for the historic definition. So those are general comments that I'd just like to pass along to give you a different perspective on it.
Do you have any questions, Ken? Thank you. Next person would like to speak, please come forward.
Holly Keeler, I'm a homeowner on 18th Avenue. Since I've been there, I've seen the neighborhood go down instead of up. Mainly because on our street alone, every other house just values a rental. And unfortunately, they were, at one time, the owner lived in one side and rented the other. Now they are renting both sides. Absentee owner room. And the one right next to me, there's been such terrible problems. Day one, the people that they get in there, okay. So they have 12 boys living in one, it's a one-bedroom in the front, a one-bedroom in the back. The back one's never rented, it's just storage most of the time. They were living in there with their sleeping bags and whatever. One night they had a party and ran around the house all over and broke bottles, broke them in my driveway, just all kinds of things. The gentleman that I'm with, it was his father originally and then it was passed down to him. He never actually lived there for any length of time, but they did some remodeling and it's on the outside of the house and it's not even covered up. It's like, I can't even explain it, there's pipes and there's nothing, it's not built around, there's part of it is and I'm sure it can't possibly be the code. Just recently, I had people next door that were felons that were arrested, put in jail, put in prison, whatever, I still know, on drugs. Evidently, he doesn't do any checking before he lets someone live there. He told me the other day that he's gonna start asking for first and last, that maybe that'll help someone. Perhaps it will. But last year, during the summer, or the year before, I'm not sure which, he mowed it or had it mowed once all summer. And I mowed it for three years, but I quit that. There's, if he gets renters in, his excuses, they're supposed to mow it. But of course, they don't mow it, he doesn't mow it. Well, now he's got someone lately that's coming once a month. But now when he gets new renters in there, I don't know if they'll come at all, you know? It was just till he gets new renters in there. But this is true all up and down the neighborhoods. There's one around on 24th Street that you never ever see a rent sign because it just constantly turns over and there are foreign people living in there. There's never a sign and there's never the same people in there. And there's always vehicles in there parked backwards because they don't have tags or they don't have, and they throw beer cans and they have a lot of parties with boom, boom, boom until. Anyway, so it's, it really, the biggest problem of all to me is the fact that there is no regulation for these people that own these rentals. Any of them in that area, they're all pretty much the same. I know Steve Felman, there's one right next to him that a builder in town owns. And it's, you know, yai-ha, well, Linda's husband goes over there and mows it because if he doesn't mow it, it looks so horrible for the neighborhood. But they're all, they're all like that. And they're across the street and they're next door and they're down the street. And we don't know how, we're just at a loss of what to do. It's terrible. Because we all have really nice homes, beautiful homes, they're worth a lot of money actually. And, but who's gonna buy it with, with something like that next door and something going on like that next door? So if there's any way to keep absentee homeowners to be accountable for their property in some sort of way, that would be one of the biggest things in that whole area. Thanks.
Excuse me, do you think, is it a general feeling then that absentee homeowners are a major problem? People that own rental properties, they don't, it. Let me ask you this question, are there people who own their homes in your neighborhood who, and live there, are they not taking, is there any of those? Do you have any of those? So those people that own their home, live there, in most cases, the lawns are mowed, the doors are painted and the respect.
Yeah.
So it's absentee. Then at least you know, at least I'm assuming that your villain, you know who your villain is now and that's who you should go after. Whether it's contacting them on a regular basis, because except when you know here that I own a couple of properties in your neighborhood. None of you have ever called me like in the negativity to my property. I don't believe I have it, I truly do believe that. But the point is, that if I would get them from you and I was a builder in town, I would respond. And most people that have enough wherewithal to own properties like this and get a little pressure from their neighbors and people, I think a lot of them, not all, will take opportunity to do better. And maybe I'm wrong, but. And there's a gentleman with his hand up, I can't, I'm gonna have to give a gentleman first choice if he would like to come forward to it. You'll have to come up to the microphone.
Mr. Ball, 2336 187. The guy that Polly was talking about. The guy that doesn't ever show up, the comedian. 98% of what Polly said was not true. Yeah, absolutely not true. Polly, in fact, just this week, I talked to you and explained when Linda told me, as I was exiting the aisle in public, that my tenant was arrested the night before and it was in the newspaper. I jumped on it and.
I recognize it's a rebuttal here, but it's not really germane, totally where we wanna go. If you have some input directly that we can help you with, and this sounds like it's more of a neighborhood type thing, but maybe next-door neighbor, next-door neighbor.
I've always responded in fact to plumbing and the side, Polly, you went to the zoning board and stopped my construction of the laundry facility that I was trying to provide my tenants so that I could get better tenants. Most women who don't want to live in my building, once they find out, they have to go to the laundromat. The building right next to me has the very same facility on the side of it with its laundry machines that I was trying to develop for my tenants. So I think you really ought to take some other aim with your thoughts and your vision on the neighborhood.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, but I have a comment.
Go ahead.
This is, I should not interrupt what you just said, but except for one thing, you mentioned that your house is valuable, that you have good property value because of what you've done to your home and you kept it up. And so one of the things that Tim mentioned in the policies in the Upper Lake District would allow for changing of setbacks that would be more available to redeveloping the residential. Because the way they are now, it's difficult to get a home, a decent-sized home that on, on the lot based on setbacks. Is that right, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. So I was thinking, does anybody here know of a developer who has looked at lots with that intention? With that mind? Is that holding anybody back? I mean, we can look at it on paper and say, yeah, that's, that's gonna hold people back, but have you heard about that? That somebody won't buy or tried to buy and then definitely couldn't build?
Well, I own a property on 17th and 23rd.
Please come to the microphone. Your field is mine.
I own, my name's Charles Patterson, I live at 2354 17th and 18th in Ridgefield. We were, we were considering putting an addition on our house. And we were unable to do that because of the setback restrictions. So it is perfect.
That's what I was thinking of, when you said your home is valuable. If there was an Upper Lake District and that was addressed in the Upper Lake, it seems to me that would, that would be one way to encourage people to do own these properties. To either sell them for, you know, for some kind of extra money, whatever, they're gonna be at a higher value than they're at now. I just think that would be an incentive that maybe some of you are aware that could be an incentive. And, I mean, what's it, Tim?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, a few comments and an observation. It seems to me that most of what we're hearing here today are not planning and zoning matters, but police and code enforcement matters. And I understand those, I think those are very important. I just ask you all to understand that there's not much we can do. One of the things that I wanted to ask Tim about is as to whether we can do anything. I know the county in St. Lucy County has maintenance ordinances and I didn't know, I don't remember discussing anything like that. But would, would something like that help or apply here?
Well, yes, I mean, we do have a, what we call are these environmental regulations, which are generally nuisance provisions, but they're really kind of weak. I mean, we can get their grasp, we have standard housing codes, we go after that, but we really need to look at the property maintenance code. The attorney, Wayne Mettler, he and I were starting to work on it and down-staffing and all that, and we haven't got back to it. We still intend to do it, but I think it's a good point, we would like to get something in place. But we do the best we can with what we have on that. And the area will take care of some of the nuisances, but it would be good to have, get back an actual property.
And would that fall under this board?
No, that would be, there'd be a code enforcement under, under code enforcement order staff.
Okay, so I just, I just wanna point that out so that the organization or the neighborhood would wanna keep that, those kind of things in mind and pursue your complaints with the appropriate people. Because, you know, waiting months to come here and talk to us about it, we obviously can't help. But if you keep on code enforcement, you keep on the police, you keep on the mayor and, yeah, city hall and Joe Nelson. If you know who's responsible for the solution to your problem, that's who you need to stay on. And I agree, you need to stay on.
Let me just point out one thing, in code enforcement, they will go after generally the tenant if they're causing the problem. But we will go after the property owner too. Normally we'll serve both of them and to get some action out of it. The real problem, also, some of the problems they have, I don't know how much in your neighborhood here, but it's the banks, these receivers should, we really, that is a pain. And one thing we would like to do, I think we were talking about doing a registry as part of the property maintenance code for that, which some of other communities have done. And I think they stood with legal challenge, I believe they have, our time we get to it, may not, so that, but we do try to follow up with that, as I said, we will serve both the property owner that we think of and we even will contact them. A lot of times, the absentee owners are not aware of what's going on and some of the good ones, they'll respond immediately and take care of. I mean, that, a lot of ways, that's quicker than our going through a code enforcement litigation process and people showing up or not showing up on code enforcement. So I hope that helps. But we need to know about it. If you've got something, please notify us, it could be anonymous. But if it's anonymous, we, anonymous, we can't give you an update on what it is unless you ask about a case that we would get back to, if it's not anonymous, okay? So I just wanted you to know that.
I was very happy to hear that there was a cure for a situation, a setback problem. And we talked, you mentioned a little earlier about incentivizing investment. What are some more examples of that, Tim? And does anybody here see a cure for investment? I know historic people love historic districts. And so an investor who has the same interest could come in. So, you know, that's an incentive there. Do we have others, Tim? And if anyone else has something to suggest?
Well, I think from our standpoint, clearly, yes, you know, this is in the historic district, similar with Osceola Park. That added some value there, even though there aren't any, there's no teeth in it, but it does recognize the neighborhood and I think brings attention to it, people, it makes more sense a community, people wanna be, to be here, that helps. I mean, I think, I'm a regulatory kind of guy, so I'm always into these kind of things, other looking at other programs, but is, is doing a complete look at what kind of incentives to put in there. As I pointed out, requiring a ten thousand minimum foot single family lot may have been fine back in the days, but now with, if we're looking to redevelop that area and provide infill, you need to provide incentives, meaning you should be able to allow to put more single family homes in there, but don't need the big lots. And probably give you more flexibility. You may even go to zero lot lines. You wouldn't know there's zero lot lines until you looked at a plan. I'm just saying, that has to be looked at. And it can fit in there. You can have an architectural style that meets in the neighborhood. And that's, I think those are the kind of incentives I'm looking at right now. I'm sure we can come up with some more, so I...
I have another question for you, Tim. You mentioned in one of these papers, white paper, about community signage.
Yes.
Sign, street signage, entrance signs. Who would give that?
Well, depending on the signs. Now, the historic sign, this was in Osceola Park, was expensive one and it was paid for by the Historic Society, right, in Buro County. Normally our sign department can make some of these signs depending, but these kinds of signs require we have to be done special. We would, normally we'd like the property owners to pay for the sign. I mean, cities only have so much money. That doesn't mean the council could not decide they want to do that as a public policy to encourage that. I'm not committing them to anything. We have a mayor and mayor and Ms. Gray don't want to do that. But it, normally we would require the property owners in that area their benefit if they want special signs to have that done. And I think we've looked at that. We just have not many further.
I can assure you as an investor in property here in Bureau Beach, that investors have a couple of things. As I look at the property, most of you understand this, it's not new to everybody. But I can only get so much rent out of the unit that I have. If you restrict me from improvements, as soon as I put an improvement, I've got to get a higher rent for my property. So if I put a nice front porch on it or do something extra, like we talked something else about, I laundry room. As soon as you do that, number one, my taxes go up. My electric bill didn't go down, okay? And that's a problem with renters. Renters in this town know that if you rent outside of the limits of the city and the area that has the power facility, it costs more because that's one of their biggest expenses, rent and electric, okay? And it's a big deal for them, believe it or not, especially in the area. Most of my tenants pay an April of four hundred and seventy-five dollars a month and have a hundred dollar electric bill, okay? So you can see what the percentage is that comes back to. And so until you give investors in your community, including yourself included, to invest in your property, improve your property and get a payment or taxes or something for a period of time, not lower your taxes, but hold off on increasing the tax facility, sometimes you're going to have to representatives and elected officials to do that for your area so that people will invest there and they'll have to pay the taxes, but it'll be five years from now when those taxes kick in and they're not retroactive. That's incentive for investors to come in and make your community better. If you, without those kinds of things, the community, there's no investor going to win there and make an effort good because he's watching the pool wagon. What he does, he wants to see the wagon moving before he jumps on. And stakeholders, the people like myself who are there now, we are the people who have to get the wagon moving in a positive direction. I personally believe that there's more negativism here, negativity here than necessary because I believe that community is so well located to the downtown area, to the library, to the government buildings. I can't see as much, I don't live there at night and I recognize that. And I think, but I do see that this is a prime location. The Overlake's going to take off. It's whether it takes off in my lifetime or in my grandchildren's lifetime. And it's up to us as the stakeholders to make that difference. And that's what I do. And can I catch you off? You go another floor, please, later. Okay, go ahead, sure.
There's two things, Deborah.
Do you think so?
Eighteen forty-six, Osceola Park. I live across the way here. But we have, we share a lot of similar concerns. I have a few ideas. I may end up coming back because I think I'll forget some. But one of the first things that I'm thinking about, Tim, is with the residential units. And we're talking about the Overlake District that we haven't really discussed yet. But a lot of the older homes, especially if you're considering preservation, used to preserve history in some of the homes, you're not going to really want to do too much to the ones that are in good condition. You probably want to try to think of incentives to keep them, otherwise you don't have your historic district anymore. That's one point I'd like to make. The other one is, is just because it's R10-12 doesn't mean that it's necessarily being used anyway. And we found that the case in Osceola Park, there's a lot of actual homeowners, but we're in the wrong, you could call it the wrong zone. So we've been considering the idea, okay, why not do more pro-use as opposed to what it was zoned for? Because I found out back in sixty-three, there was a city council that just kind of decided, well, all the movement seems to be at the beach. Downtowns are dying. There was a lot of different thinking back there. So a lot of the zoning got done then. And so our neighborhood, I found out later, was kind of designated as a rental area. Well, since then, times have changed, people's thoughts have changed. People are going back to older neighborhoods. So we find ourselves kind of at a flex where we're trying to figure out how to hold on to what we have, you know, preserve the history for those of us who want to, for those who feel like we do. And yet the idea, back to the Overlake, the smaller homes, the idea would be that with this Overlake District, that someone who needed or wanted to add on, you know, if there was an incentive to do that, and yet also to encourage them to keep, you know, the look, I don't know if they like the look of the house or want to keep part of the historic aspect. Because if you do too much change to that building also, it's no longer an adequate correct canvas to, it loses its historic value. So there's a few things going on here. There's a few variables and dynamics going on. It's actually a little more complex. If you want to try to save an older residential area that's got historic significance, it's not as simple as we might think. There are more positives, I agree. And I think there's more that we could do to draw the positive aspect to it as opposed to everything that's wrong. Unfortunately, sometimes when you concentrate on that, it does, it makes you self-compress. It doesn't help. So recognizing the problems, you still want to be able to work with them and yet figure out, like you said, find the solutions. And I think that's what this is all about too. I mean, we recognize what's holding us back, the drawbacks. But what can we use to help us improve this or give a better understanding? Part of the white paper that Tim came up with, talk about historic preservation, the idea of educating the neighbors, and that's something that the Preservation Board that I sit on has been discussing, that how to get more of this across to the neighbors. The incentives, the tax payments, whatever it takes. You know, how many more people actually do want to retain these homes as they are? You know, add about here and there. I also think there's a lot of confusion as far as permitting. Like with people running down washhouses and what have you. I don't think that based on what the size is or the use of the property, sometimes you can't always put a washhouse inside some of these small homes or even on the outside because of health safety. So we've had instances in our area where people were putting washers and dryers actually outside behind the buildings you couldn't see them, they were running off into the yard. So there has to be a closer look at making sure that people are actually, you know, doing the right permitting and doing the health, safety, general welfare aspect as far as plumbing and electricity. We've actually had houses burned down because people haven't been doing proper maintenance of here on the road. So there's quite a few variables. I think people need a little more education as far as how it actually works so that we can actually do more benefit for the neighborhood. And I think that at these workshops, I think that would be beneficial. And I think zoning does play a big part. Code is a big part. And unfortunately, I think the two departments, even though it's under Tim's roof, they often don't talk to each other and I think because of separate boards. So sometimes people have a misunderstanding of who does what. So I think, you know, that education also I think would be beneficial.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Next person who would like to speak, please come forward. Let's, let's, John go first. You go first. It's always fun. So you go ahead. You're welcome to come in.
Thank you. I'm John Burdenzil. I live at twenty-four oh five eighteen. Currently stationed at Ray Patterson Air Force Base. So I've got two years before I retire and then make bear of my permanent home. My wife and I permanent, my son lives out there. And about five years ago, five or six years ago, we stumbled upon Bureau Beach. My daughter lives in Fort Pierce. And we were out for a drive. And we came through the area and immediately we went through the old town, the original town and fell in love with it. And we've watched it over the years. And a property became available. We purchased it immediately. Like I said, I'm from Ohio. I'm currently on lean because, Linda, you got to hold me. And I'm one of the folks that listened. I came out. And again, I'm encouraged to see this. I'm encouraged. Out in Ohio, around Columbus, I'm out in an area called Germantown. And you couldn't give that property away years ago. And they revitalized it because they saw what a gem they had. And I don't know, you know, I'm driving around, I saw what a gem that original town is. So I'm not certain why you folks aren't embracing this. You have a moment to say, we got something from the original, shared version, if you want to say that, that painstakingly way now developed this area here. And when I, before I even learned about this, was learning about the rich history, the Asian history right down the road from here. People were asking me when I was going to buy that house, do you mind airplane noises? No, I'm not. That's what I do. I do. So it may well be asleep. That B-29 was the coolest thing. So, yeah, those types of things. I had an opportunity, I was having to do my PT the other day. I still happen to do it. I run across a few bridges there. And I met a lady, a very nice lady, who's currently working on your airship. So again, you have all these components. Folks, you just got to embrace it. You got to, you got to, now's the time. You've got to take that incentive and lean forward and make this happen. Folks that live there, Polly, God bless you, you've been keeping an eye on our property and my son, thank you very much. Folks on the other side, because Mr. McKee, you know, been watching my son. He's a teacher. I'm over at Choke. He drives back and forth there every day. You know, he loves the area. He loves Bureau Beach. And so, so again, two years that my wife and I will get to call Bureau Beach our home permanently. And that was one of the things that before I even heard about this group is I was learning about the rich history here. And I was thinking, why is it that, why is it that happened? But pleasantly to find out here was, the wheels were already in motion. I want to be part of that. And I want to encourage you folks to get on board with this and make this happen. Because that continues to compress. And pretty soon you're not going to have that. As far as the drudies and that, you know, you're just going to have to get a place to get on board a little more. I'm wondering about the fire department, about fire coverage and that. If that hasn't been addressed yet, the government has too many people living in a property. But I just, again, want to just close on this is that here's an opportunity, folks. And I'm glad I'm part of that community. I'm glad I'm living in the heart of the original town. And again, I encourage everybody to continue this fight to be recognized. Absolutely. Sir, could you go back up, please?
Yeah.
You made a comment that kind of interested me. I think you said that you're surprised we weren't embracing this. I wonder what you meant by that, but I also, this is not a criticism. I want to get your ideas on what you think we should be embracing.
Well, I mean, you basically, you preserve what's left of that original footprint. And certainly it sounds like, you know, when I drive around the area there and I see some of those commercial properties and that, and I see some of the, some of the, I guess, would say, and I, John, right? I think John and Polly, you were referring to the little cantina that's across from me. I mean, on Friday and Saturday night, I say it's party down there. And I understand what's going on there. And so, so again, how do you, how do you get a, let's say, better quality renter in there? Folks, I don't know. I mean, you're the board member. I'm just kind of looking on the outside and trying to see, you know, get it from your vantage point, a different lens per se on that. But for the years that I've lived there, you know, I see the people that, like Polly, that are invested in that neighborhood. And I've spoken to her numerous times. But again, that's what, that's why I want to be there. I want to be in that area. So I mean, no disrespect, disrespect, sir. I'm just, from my perception, around here, there's, and maybe I'm getting totally wrong. There just seems to be some hesitancy on moving forward. The white paper was very encouraging. But the white paper from Mr. McGary and the board here, yeah, I'm not certain how you folks are playing together.
I'm not, I'm not sure there's too much controversy here.
And if I, if I meant that, I...
No, not at all. I don't believe from a historical standpoint, there's been too much conversion here in the last ten or fifteen years other than the church we're at. And the parking concerns, everybody didn't want parking on the street. So the church was forced to make some park, make some off-street parking. And they certainly didn't want the church to go up. But other than that, I don't think there's been too much conversion from, if any, conversion from residential to, you know, POI, professional ops, institution.
No, sir, I'm really pointing out what I see is that the commercial properties that you already have established at this point. And then they're embedded into a residential area. And like one of the gentlemen was saying, how to incentivize those folks to either vacate or to get these properties back into residential type of structures.
John, one of the comments I'd like to make back to you, sir, is I think the board will reflect what the people want us to reflect. Now, I only speak for one person on the board when I, when my vote comes down, okay, on whatever we decide on. But the people that are in the community will influence us significantly. And if there's a majority, or especially if it's a large majority, if people want what they want, this board is there to serve their needs. Well, you're not, well, we should make, yeah, and that's...
Absolutely. I'm here to help you any way I can.
But a lot of times, there's two sides to that influence sometimes. And we only hear from some, but do they represent all? And what we can only do is what we hear and what we get the input we have. So I think we'll reflect what this community wants. And I think that's what you will ultimately get from us.
Certainly. But again, you have to look at residents versus landlords.
Well, I don't either.
And I'm not taking anything away from you.
No, sir, I...
I'm a great landlord.
But it's property owners, they're stakeholders. And I have equal weight on those. And if it was your business, you would like to look at it that way.
Certainly, property. But again, it's the residents who live there who do, like you said, who are there at night and then when you have vehicles, you know, running through that area at all hours, you know, that's a little disconcerting for those folks.
But be your business owner or not, sort of negativity in the neighborhood is not good for anybody.
But if it's a business owner... What I did notice is that, I guess at one time when the bus tram or whatever that was, built a...
I got rid of that one.
Thank you. Because you had a lot of...
The neighborhood was together on that and you pushed it on and you got what you wanted.
And so, and so there again, that should inspire folks to continue this, to get recognized. So that, again, I'd make a note of that.
No, no, you're not.
I just appreciate the opportunity and also appreciate the opportunity to someday say that Bureau is my home, so. Give you two more years, folks.
The goal line, the success on the goal line for your community was because you stayed with it. And this is not a short-term run. It's a marathon. And you'll have to stay after it. That will happen when you persist persistent, okay?
Okay. And the good news on that is where it's been...
And the good news on that is where it's been relocated, everyone is thrilled with it. It's never been ridden so well. Yeah.
Can I say something? I'm at the end, so he doesn't know I'm here. I guess I'm trying to talk to him. Zoning, planning and zoning has very little power to do with what really seems to be the problem. Most of the uses in the community here are grandfathered in. Zoning came after some of these uses were established. We really can't tell people they can no longer have a record income or they can no longer run a business if they are grandfathered in as a non-conforming use. We can do some things about, you know, the use of the land. Maybe do some setback kind of stuff. What I hear from most of you is that you're more concerned about the manner in which people are using their property and in some cases violating your understanding of what the rules are. And I think that's valid. A person which has a two-unit building should not be allowed to have a third unit in that building without going through some sort of a process to get approval. And you should not be allowed to do that. And it can be stopped. That is enforcing the existing zoning ordinance that covers the property. It is important that the community identify those non-conforming uses or the illegally uses, adding something to a building without a building permit. It's tough for the city to go around and inspect properties on a constant basis to know things are going on. The eyes and ears of the community are important to identify. So enforcement of the existing zoning ordinances that we have is very, very important. And it's important that you guys pay attention to that and make as much noise as possible so that the staff can receive a priority to deal with it on an enforcement basis. Everybody's clamoring for enforcing. It's very difficult to do that. Tim mentioned that access to homes is a very difficult thing. If he has credible evidence that there's a violation, then he has a better handle on being able to go in and get some legal permission to confront an owner that they're in violation. He has to have credible evidence. The calming of traffic is an important consideration. The city can do something about that. That's an enforcement thing. We can look at that. I think part of our role is to establish the speed limits that exist in various areas. We unfortunately, as a board, cannot enforce it. It has to be enforced by the, you know, by the police department, by the code enforcement individual. I can assure you that based on conversations that we've had in public, this board really supports trying to preserve this community as best we can. If we come up with something that we can do that will be of benefit to the community, you know, we will do it. But I think what really bothered me and concerned me was when Linda stood up at the beginning of the meeting and said, "The community interest is waning." And she had a lot of interest. When you have specific problems, like the church parking issue, where they were parked all over the community. And you went in, you took action, you got together, you identified the problem, and it was resolved. Same thing happened with the go line, the parking area. So if you have an issue, you have to identify the concerns you have. You have to sit down as a group and identify them and go to the proper place to get that resolved. Enforcement of existing rules is not something we can do. That's probably what we can do is set the rules, if it makes sense and if they can be enforceable on, you know, for the community. I assure you, I don't think this board is interested in allowing any more non-conforming uses in this community. Somebody comes in and wants to expand their business, we'll probably, you know, I don't think this board would want to do that in this kind of community. So where we can, we will do that. But not that much comes to us. And that's an issue that you have to look at. If an opportunity occurs, if a parcel goes on the market and it's a non-conforming use, and somebody buys it and says, "I want it back to residential," that's something that could be encouraged. But that's the only way that's going to occur. If a new owner of the property stops using and says, "I don't want this property to be used that way anymore," takes it off, that's how you're going to make progress. So you might want to go out there and find people who buy these properties that want a heavy residential. And that's how many of these communities have turned around. They've turned around because people move in. And they work together. And they actually combine together and get different landowners to come and buy the property and return the properties to their original intended use. So that's something that I think... I would hope you all would work with Linda and reorganize, restructure, and re-energize your neighbor association. That's probably the most important thing you want to do.
One is, I just got a couple of quick questions. The map, I think maps are important, especially when they're at public meetings like this. And I'm wondering why that road is missing the extension of 18th Avenue, all the way down to 206. Is that just oversight or did we abandon that to the county? Well, that belongs to the county. It's a road that goes right through the middle road. It's got a portion that's one-way, right here.
This is from the GIS map, so there may be an access through there.
There's a two-way road here.
That's a mistake, but this is...
I think it's important, if it's a mistake, that that's correct. Because that's a road up there.
Okay, well, that was from the GIS. It mostly only shows right, the roads that are in right of ways. That way you can...
And because I think that that big blue square, the one that parks, I understand, and I know that that's not the purview of this group here. I see a lot of inlay on the neighborhood, which is okay. But I think the neighborhood is also looking for city leadership. And if that's not you guys, you might not even know who it is. So that we can get some of that leadership. They should have an interest in making this big square safer for someone. Pardon?
Could you please point that out on board?
This square here, this is a road right here. This goes right down to 206. There's a road. This is where the old hospital ambulance turnaround was. You've all taken that road. It turns into one-way here. So you've got to break the log and straight across. You've got to come through the parking lot that the go line used to be and come around like that to want to stick through there. You should be able to just go straight through. It's a great opportunity to get it back since nobody's using it. Matter of fact, this would make a great park, even though most of it counts. But I don't know that those are things that this group...
Is this so far, are they planning on moving it up? This map, the aerial map, if you will, shows that being outside of your town.
Well, that's the other point I wanted to make. Is I don't, that's because if you look at 10.4 or 11.4, I don't think that that, I don't know if that's arbitrary, that's a recommendation, is it not? That's a draft. Couldn't that be that whole square so that it wasn't outside of that area? And I just want that to go on record, too, that I think that's something we shouldn't just... Somebody said, I guess it was Tim, that said that it should just be from north of 22nd Street. And the map shows it just going down to, I don't know why...
Is it number one?
It's 11.1? No, I mean, 11.4 talks about what things cannot be, are going to be encouraged to be left the same.
That would require a rezoning, wouldn't it, Tim? It's governmental, isn't it?
That, that is why I'm going to be including, I guess, like our analysis. That seemed like an arbitrary...
Well, it's not residential. I don't think it's not residential. I believe it's hospital. That's what we got into over there, go up the road, up north of 20th Street. It's a hospital district, and that's what we used to go on code enforcement on the hub. So it doesn't address the hazard to do with this. But the strategy, the enhancement strategies the neighborhood did, they would like to see a park up there. And we talked to the county at one time. So with the county school board leaving, I believe they're leaving here, I think there's some opportunities to talk about it. So it's not a bad...
Okay, great. I just wanted to make a question. All right, thank you. And then you said as far as no further impact being made since the church was built. If you look on the map over where 19th Street is, it's up there by 26th Street, excuse me, 20th Street. There's a red square. That's where, I believe, that's the laundry mat and the convenience store. It's on the north side, yes. And that blue that's behind there, not too many, a couple of years ago, that used to be a residential building. And it got torn down to a parking lot.
The church did take that parking lot.
Isn't it a parking lot? No, it's not a parking lot.
But they did take it down. The church owned it.
It's here, it's here. Yeah, no, but it's not a parking lot.
It's not a parking lot. It's a pavilion and...
It's a pavilion, right, yeah.
More like recreational area for their church. It's not residential, correct?
And then another road that got chopped up since then is where 22nd Street went right through. But I guess First Baptist was able to take over that. I'm just pointing out the encroachments are continuing. So it's, you know, we watch, we go to the meetings, and I do appreciate it. But we do it in some senses.
Let's not take the church property as an example. They bought, let's make up six-pound homes there or something like apartments or whatever they were. They tore them down and made a park. Now, how can you fight that? I mean, it's really their...
But it's one downtown, you buy it.
I understand. But as a zoning board, you can't do anything, see what I'm saying?
I don't know what you can do, but...
I don't think you can do anything. I think if it was your house that you sold and somebody wanted to tear it down, we'd have a hard time stopping you from doing that and putting a park in.
I agree with that.
So it's not something that we control and we can't control. It's not reasonable to control that.
Well, that takes me to the first person's comment, Ms. Judy Jones. And she was talking about a property that's right on 19th Avenue, right across from our big blue square that arrived. North of our big blue square. You see the orange, the big orange, and there's another little orange next to it? There's the big orange one, and another just smaller orange right next to it. There's three oranges in the road. Talk about the middle orange on 19th, which is north of the community church. You see that? You got that square? You with me on that square?
I'm not here.
19th?
Code it all the way.
This one right here.
On the west side of 19th?
That's a due place that got kind of wrecked in the hurricanes, which was just before the big hurrah-ha with the community church. They own that property. That's the storage property. And it's been a storage property since a couple of years after that. We were told it was going to be renovated and turned into teacher's housing. That's never happened. That's the one that she was talking about, right there. This is the problem, one that we've had a lot of problems with because it's in Section 8. And there's a lot of people going in and out of there. They don't mess very long. A lot of them get arrested. We have mental lads in there. But overall, the neighborhood's pretty quiet. I don't agree with some of the comments I heard. I think it's still a pretty quiet neighborhood. I mean, there are cars and bikes going by. It's not worse than pretty much any other place that I know of. It's a pretty quiet and used neighborhood. And I think it has great protection. But if the city and neighborhood, and I think it's both a service about preserving it, maybe that's not the right decision. Maybe the right decision is abandon the whole thing, let it go into commercial condos or something like that. No, I don't think so. But if it's to go the other direction, you need to get tough with whatever you can do to go in. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Let me make a comment.
Yeah, sure. Charlie, you're next to do it.
I'm really, really short, sorry. I just had a comment about something you said. You came from Ohio. Okay, most of us, I would guess, in this room, except for the fact, because it's this original town, came from somewhere else. I'm included. I came from somewhere else. A number of you may have. Anyway, but during this great recession that we had, I don't know about you either, but I've heard quite a bit on the news about how small towns, small inner-city neighborhoods have really struggled through this recession. And some have come back or are starting to come back. There are some out there in this country that are starting to come back. And they've figured it out. And every community is different, obviously. But there's some key elements that I'm sure are similar. And I think it would be who of all of us, the board, anybody in the city staff, and everybody in the original town, to start doing your homework. And additional workshops that we have, that I feel like we need to continue this, but bring those ideas, share them. Because we don't have to start from scratch. We don't have to start, you know, create everything brand-new. There's a lot of good things that have happened, especially in the last five years, in some neighborhoods. So if we can figure that out, do the research, make some phone calls, email people. You know, it's all people on the other side. People live in those towns, too. So talk to them. And I've seen that happen just in our Main Street. You pick up the phone and you call another Main Street, I have. And I say, "What are you guys doing? What works for you?" And believe it or not, they love to share when they have a success story. So I think that's something, that's what makes this whole thing to me so cool, is that this is all about people. These are homes, and these are people who live here. So start talking and come back and share with us.
I think this group has been very cordial to each other in that some ideas won't work, but please throw the idea up. The idea of a park may not come to fruition. But if anybody's like that, you just don't leave an original town, okay? Because that's to be a wonderful thing. Can you make it happen? Maybe not. But let's get the ideas out there. And that's what the workshops are about. And I think we're doing that successfully. Now, Charlie, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ideas, why I stepped up here. My name is Charlie Wilson. I live across the street. My car's green. If anybody wants to key the car, it's right out there. My address is P.O. Box 651114 is where I get my mail. I waited to come up here and call after Mr. Schuman left because he's had just about as many pictures as I can stand for the last couple of days. And to my friend over here from Ohio, I used to live in German Village. And I worked for Governor Rhodes in the Ohio governor's mansion, it's not too far. And I'm glad I'm here because I used to have to take ice skates from German Village down to... Because when I applied for my job, it was summer, and they were out in the yard playing volleyball. Three months later, we were under ice forever. As Linda mentioned, I recently moved to this neighborhood. Recently meaning a year ago, in August. And I love it. This is just, it's a wonderful neighborhood. And you're able to walk anywhere. The people are friendly. It's a great neighborhood. The libraries right there, restaurants, you can be, you can eat. It's like going to Disney. You can go to any country in this circle by living here. It's a wonderful neighborhood. We have a lot of advantages in this neighborhood. And as I'm getting older and my life is changing a little bit, we're looking for a house. And we've been looking for a house in this neighborhood. And we're continuing to look. We haven't found exactly the right place, but we're looking to buy a house. And one of the reasons I want to congratulate, I see some, I go to church here. So I'm here every Sunday. And I see some of the people that I go to church with sitting here in the audience. And I congratulate, especially I see Anna there. You know, if anybody knows anything about history, that's the woman right over there. And you have a wonderful leader, you know, named Linda Hillman, right there. Led the charge on the go line, as you mentioned a couple of times. And I was not able to help her very much on the county commission. I was able to go in that one time when we had a big fight. And we had to show that the reasons that Joe Barrett was giving for not having this go line were not exactly accurate. Is that it? The non-belligerent way of saying that? Was not exactly accurate. And so I think that really helped the neighborhood. Two things that I heard tonight. One is, you heard earlier that one of the reasons that you're having trouble investing in the buildings in this neighborhood, as the gentleman said, is, you know, some of the people that live here can afford rent and electricity. So I want to just mention in passing that one of the best ways you can do to help this is to sell Bureau Electric. And you may very well be able to get some investment in this community as well as the rest of the communities around the city, very big. But there is one other expense that people have these days that they didn't used to have, and that is communications. And one of the things I wanted to note is that the Southern Mall Building is not very far from here. And you're very close to Trump for high-speed access. Remembering German Village and a theme, and this is the idea that I'd like to put out. I've been researching this a little bit. I haven't finished. But one of the things that people are moving to is living and working in their home and in their neighborhoods, where people used to live above their stores. And that required, but one of the things we have a problem with is there's very little zoning that allows you to operate a home business. Because as I understand it, when you construct something that allows you to have a home business, you have to do it to a commercial grades as opposed to residential grades. And so... And so it costs more to construct a new property. But one of the driving forces is high-speed access. And one of the driving forces in communities all over the nation are people that are taking over neighborhoods like this, salespeople, people who are detailed people, people who can live and work on a computer, and they can live anywhere. They can live anywhere in the world, so why not live here? So if you, if you have a neighborhood and you have a group of homes that allowing infrastructure to be there, that allow people to work in their homes, that travel is an example, you've set a theme for a neighborhood. And I can tell you that they're looking at one development out west of town that is trying to, that is part of their marketing, is to have the entire community be business-friendly to individual people who work on computers and sales and the things that don't require people to come to their homes. I'm not suggesting that anybody have traffic that comes to their homes, but people that work there. And so this community, when I started looking at property, this community that we have here is perfect for that. The library, the Bell South Building, the county administration building, central to every single restaurant you ever want to go to. This is perfect for that. So one thought is, as you asked for ideas, one thought is that you can make this community, "I wish you knew what German Village was like. It just had a theme, and it was a wonderful place, and it was right in the center of downtown Columbus. Why not do that here, where we can encourage people?" And one of the ways to do this, because the other expense is high-speed access, cable. So my two questions are, number one, does it require any kind of a zoning change or incentive that can be offered by planning and zoning that allows people to help equip their homes? Because it, there was a television station in Asheville, North Carolina, and it's on top of a mountain, and it's in the most historic building in all of Asheville. And you walk up there, and that building is beautiful. And you walk inside, and you open a door, and there's every piece of electronic equipment inside that building that you could possibly want. So you can do this kind of building with very little offering incentives to enhance this neighborhood by allowing people to make changes inside their building that keep this building being residential and keep the buildings being historic. And then the other question is, are there any restrictions in our right-of-ways that allow or disallow high-speed access? Truly, I think, Mark, you're an expert, is it what, it's a Trump line, is what, there's some, the kind of lines that come into a neighborhood where you can have, I mean, you can split off of that, so then all of a sudden, the houses in this neighborhood, you're going to be able to market the houses in this neighborhood because they have communications and they have been near all the facilities that they need. You want to transfer this neighborhood, you want to keep this neighborhood having a, having the historic feel, and you want to be able to increase property values, that's one way to do it. Thank you very much.
There was some concern that this might be the only meeting before it goes to City Council or wherever it's going next. What really, and then we're probably the catalyst for the group gathering because of the community church. And if that's, if we caused that, I'm proud of us. At the time that we were building this building, that's what caused the ruckus. And we feel that we've been a very good neighborhood. We had, after the concerns of the building, we have a parking cortage of about 30 people that every Sunday we monitor the parking. We have two police officers, one on this corner, one on the corner over here. And we've got our congregation pretty well trained that we want the parking in the parking lots and not on the street. I do have to say that when it comes to winter time, we have to run some people off the streets, and they hop above, and some will even drive away as they look and see that the neighbors have parked on the streets, but I'm telling them, we'd really appreciate it if you don't park on the streets. So that does get to be a problem in winter time. When this building was being built, we built it within city guidelines, yet the city council arbitrarily came back and said, "We think 14,000 square feet is too much, and we want you to cut 10% off." Well, if you've ever been through a building program, a building was designed, you don't just cut 10% off one end, the whole, the whole thing has to be redesigned. So in deference to the neighborhood, we redesigned the building, took us a year, and it took us many thousands of dollars. And I want to say that the comment was made about the expansion of non-conform uses. 19th Avenue. 19th Avenue goes right through here. That was 30 years ago. Somebody got a long memory, but probably before many of us were here. That building was built in 1980. So this was all done, that hadn't been an expansion in 30 years. Our only requirement now is for parking. The condominiums, the apartments we mentioned over here, let me sit and tell you that as of today, those three apartments are on the market. We have a contract on two of them. We have no intentions of tearing that building down, no intention to put a parking lot over there. So rest assured that those buildings, those apartments over there will remain apartless. We do need parking. And I think you will always have to agree that, let's just take the apartment building across the street. If that was raised and a nicely landscaped and buffered parking lot was put in there with no tenants to bother, no police required, that that might be an improvement to the We're as concerned about this neighborhood as the neighbors are. There are some very nice homes here, and I think it's probably these people, the ones that own those homes. And as I read the background material, we managed to see the demographics showing a highly transient or at least non-owner occupied units. No one, certainly not landlords, and this has already been mentioned, not landlords are going to come in and voluntarily infuse their cash as if to wave a magic wand, and suddenly the area is full of coin owner occupied homes. It is not. We believe that with type of land use restrictions that are proposed here, there will be the exact opposite effect, and potential investors will find less cumbersome areas to invest in. There are many references to the residential community, but it appears the business community has been forgotten, including the churches, and it appears in this document that the business community has no rights at all. In the mission of the church, we use ten short "thou shalt nots." And that works well in character development, but "thou shalt nots" do not do real well in capital attraction. We're afraid that this is one of those situations where you should be careful what you pray for, and you might get it. What we would like to ask is that this project, and I think as I've gotten the timetable answered in Tim's opening comments, be slowed down, workshop, we would love to host, and I will offer you that right now, we will host more meetings like this in this room, and we would love to be a part of it. The business community would love to be a part of it. If you look at this map, I don't see much reason for all of this. The courthouse, the library, the little businesses down here on a state highway, I don't understand why you would want to restrict some of that change when it runs on a state highway. I mean, I understand interior roads and the neighborhood, call it that, not on a permanent road like that. We are ready, willing, and able to work with the neighbors. We want to work with the neighbors. And again, I offer the room, the building, we'll do anything we can. We love the neighborhood, we want the neighbors to be happy. And I think in the last eight or nine years, that since this building began getting planned, we've been good neighbors. We get many compliments from the neighborhood about the fact that parking on the streets is not an issue anymore. So we want to help, but some of the comments that have been made incentivizing is something that doesn't appear here. These are all "thou shalt nots," and that is going to discourage capital from coming into this neighborhood if you tell me what I can't do instead of making it exciting for what I can do. So, thanks.
Jane?
Yeah, let me correct. We did not state, we were dealing with between 22nd, we were dealing with the residential area. We were not, I mean, and you can still argue, that's valid points, but we were not discouraging the development down that.
That's not what it says.
No, that isn't what it says. I can tell you, we only dealt with 22nd through north of there, which still had mostly the residential component.
More than 22nd.
22nd, yeah.
Well, then I would suggest that if you go through this progress, that the parameters be changed to something...
Yeah, and I think, and that's why we're going to go through workshops, and that's a valid statement. I just want to be sure we didn't, I mean, we may be crazy sometimes, I'm not that crazy.
Jane, I'm glad you're happy with the timetable, and we will be going over this a lot more, but I hope you'll submit to us, and I don't want you to do it tonight, exactly what sections of the proposed code that you take exception to. I don't think you're going to be very popular, you know, sticking on the higher ground or...
As I heard comments tonight, I thought to myself, we're not opposing anything, it's kind of all on the same page. And that's the way we want to approach this thing. But I think what I would prefer to see is that everybody get together and come up with a common direction as opposed to having it mandated from the dice.
Right. Well, and I would like to see things that are objectionable to you because they might not, they might have jumped out to you and not to us, so they're worth talking about.
And, you know, just from sitting back there listening, it would appear to me if coven force when the police department got heavily involved in Missouri, in about six months, it'd be flimsy whistle.
I agree with you.
The other thing is that this is enabling us to go ahead with this overlay district, all of this. So what you're seeing is "thou shalt nots" really is enabling the positive to occur, I think.
I better read it again then.
Excuse me, Jane, can you, my, my comment to you is that I have, but, one of my properties, but your property, okay?
My property, the church property.
The church property, yes. Mine, you're representing the church.
Yes, right.
And my point being that I couldn't ask for a better neighbor. Your yard is better maintained than mine. Your trees are better. In fact, I was shamed sometimes to look at mine a little years ago. You've got to be a little better because that's the idea of the neighborhood. Do you look worse than your neighbor or better than your neighbor? Whenever you can say, "He looks better," I mean, Nietzsche should get out there and do something with his painter fence or fix your wall or whatever you do. And you've got to meet the standard neighborhood. When everybody tries to accomplish that, we will move this neighborhood forward. If we don't do that, it will go down. And believe me, you can get on people, I'm telling you, you can, you have to work at it, though. So, so I have no problem with the church being here, and I don't attend this church, but I...
Come next time.
I encourage you to come to mine also, we don't steal from you.
Larry, you're saying a rising tide raises all the ships.
I think that's true, I really do believe that. Yes, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm living in Wallace, and my address is 2170, down in the south end of the county outside of the city, but we do have the property over on 16th. And I was, I've lived here, I'm fourth generation, I've lived here all my life, and I love all of the old sections of the city. I run the whole banker offices in the city and around the county. And there are a couple of dynamics I just wanted to point out that I think you need to bring some specialists in when you have these meetings. Because what we used to find as the buyers in these neighborhoods were young, started like children of people who grew up here, and younger people, they had the energy to come in and paint and fix and plant, and what we saw in the battle, a lot of the older people with the houses just got to be too much for them to maintain. What's happened in the last number of years, I'll say 10, but I'm not sure exactly, the dynamics with certain ways since hurricanes, is that the insurance rates on these older homes have gone to the root, literally. And what's happened is that we've actually had homes that the mortgage payment was less than what the insurance payment was. And it has really diminished the availability of these homes for families and for people to live in. And what's happened in place of that is investors have come in, picked them up because they're depressed, and, you know, they've converted them into rentals, they're not insuring them many times because they're not very mortgageable, and they don't have the insurance on them, which that sort of doesn't mean that they have to keep them up to the levels they would if they were insured. So I think you need to look at the insurance dynamic. We were involved with the Sebastian Historic District, we had the building at the corner of Main Street and US 1, and it was built in the late 1800s, and we went in and put in new plumbing and new electric and just did everything. And our insurance rate is still based on the fact that it's like, they gave us a little bit of credit, but we're still paying like if it was a 1930s building, and the rates are astronomical. So it makes it really hard to reinvest in these neighborhoods. You know, I'm not giving you a solution because I don't, I wish I had one, but I think trying to get some people that understand those dynamics and understand why these areas are having a hard time to transition. And the other comment that I'd like to make was, I did get very involved with the overlay district about 20 years and some years ago that Dennis Ragsfield did down behind the city hall and the courthouse. And, you know, it was conceived, I, you know, I thought it was a very conceptual idea of having living and working and, you know, you all put up, you know, not you, obviously, but whoever was in your seats, you know, designed a beautiful overlay district that has had absolutely no investment in over 20 years. And I personally have had investors look at the area to try to come in and do things, and whatever they wanted to do always fell somewhat out of the parameters of the overlay. So I would just suggest as you move forward to look very seriously at serious flexibility because if you want investment, you're going to need to really look at how these moving parts work and try to work with them on it. Thank you.
Linda, I've got a good memory, but it's short. What is that overlay district that you're talking about? Is Tim already aware of that?
Yeah, I know, it's not an overlay. It's a mixed use. And it was designed to be that, but it had, you can't even administer it, it's not working. You're right. That was one of the things I...
You turned me off at the core about it.
It went through a process, and they, everybody listed, and they knew, you know, and, you know, here's how the plans were going to be, and this I thought this was going to be. It was, it looked great on paper, but 20 years later, it didn't really what it was intended to be, it was to get investment in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Hi, I'm Peter Robinson, I live at 315 Greatway Road, Durham, Florida. I'm president of Laura Homes and Laura Corporations. My problem with this is just a little understatement. And, you know, your planning director said this in the beginning, said, "We want to get something structural, so when people come in, we can say no to you." Well, I'm one of those guys that's developed, and the second you say no, I'm gone. And if you do that to these properties, you've already got a lot of properties that these people have been telling you are on the board right now. You know, it's a question of whether they're going to, you know, be valuable or if they're going to, they've been saying, because I, God knows, I've been to enough neighborhoods with things saying. I can tell you the stories when we were putting the mall together with the Bartlett. I don't know if you remember your downtown back then, but the classic line, one of the Bartlett guys, to me, was we drove through downtown, which was empty. He said, "They always say the mall kills downtown. This one got killed before we got here." So, you know, that's what you don't want to do. If you want to help kill this, say you can't do anything, and you're going to kill it. And... And that's wrong. And then, finally, I want to speak, you've got, today, you've got the neighborhood here, but I'm also speaking that this church is a great asset. And if the church wants to expand, God bless it, because I've got a three-year-old grandson, he goes to the church school. And if they have more little kids to come in here, and they get the training that they get at this church, they're not going to be the people that these people are complaining about right now, who are causing all the trouble in the neighborhood. Because they teach them the right ways to do things, and you've got to think about that. And that's part of what this church is here for. It teaches people to do the right things and not the wrong things. And I can tell you, the people that are causing all their problems, they're not here in the church, and they're not 30%. So, that's all I'm saying to you is, you know, you know, and then, you've got a problem, you know, when you've got absentee landowners, you've got a problem. I'm an absentee landowner of the Marlin. Guess what I was doing? I went around looking at roofs, trying to figure out how to fix all these damn roofs. And those are the things that happen. So, that's just, you know, that's just part of life. And then, my other comment would be, don't put the overlay district on this. You're sitting here talking about single family? Look at all the blue you've got here. And I remember when the courthouse was built, this area was really dead back then, and that was like the greatest thing ever. Because, you know, I can remember some of the landowners, the county commission, oh, thank God you're putting the courthouse down here, you're helping us. You know, and these are things that have to happen. You've got to keep reinvigorating things. You've got to get people, you know, to do more than just say no. And then, the other problem you've got is, you've got these neat little pictures, but you don't have a good area. And you don't have a lot of pictures of what you're really talking about, which are the houses. And you need to look at them. And this is a nice little house, you know, and it's probably one of your houses, I don't know, you know, it's in good shape. But this house has asbestos siding. So, it's, you know, that's tough to get somebody to buy something with asbestos siding, I don't know if it would look well, probably, but it's a tough deal. And then, here, here's another one, it's not so nice. You know, it's in the same area. So, these are the things, you've got to deal with this. You don't solve it with one big overlay district, you solve it one step at a time. And if you really want to get involved, you've got to get involved and try and figure out what your problems are, and work on each house and come up with a program. Which you're also going to have the problem that Linda talked about, is your insurance is going to be too high, and the taxes, not the taxes, but the electric is going to be too high. And that insurance is killing this place, particularly on the older houses. I just, I sold one up in Sebastian that looked similar to some of these, and I'll never forget, the owner who sold it, looked at it, looked at the inspection report, and said to me, why the hell is this lady buying? And when I saw what her insurance bill was, I couldn't understand it either. But, you know, we need people to invest money and approve things, and what you're doing is not going to do that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep. Okay. I'm fascinated with your original comment, because earlier I had asked, you know, what do you see that could incentivize or raise the level of the desirability? And you suggested that, don't say no to me, you know, because I want to do something good here. What would you build there that is being proposed as a no? What would you like to see?
The problem is, when you put the overlay, if you read that overlay, you start reading all the no's in there, you know, just like Jane was talking about. And once you read the no, you leave. You know, you don't wait, you know, there's plenty of places people like to see. I mean, let's be honest, the reason, you know, there's a reason I'm here. Only reason we came here was because the president of Piper Aircraft complained that he couldn't find housing for his employees. And a lot of you guys may not have been here in 1974, but they couldn't find housing. Now, this housing was all here, but they didn't consider it satisfactory housing for their employees. So, we came down and built ours. That was the first apartment, drive-by, a quarter thousand, it was $28,32,000, you know, that was our price difference.
So, you see this area developing as affordable housing, then?
Um, I'm not going to, I'm going to do that to people like Linda, because, I mean, you've got to try and create some sort of effect, you know, kind of like you've got the art district over there, you've got to create a district, but it's got to be a positive district. And then, you've got to deal with the, you know, the problems. If you've got a house, at least, this is another, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I say a house with asbestos siding, I'm gone. You know, now, some people will buy it, you know, if somebody, if somebody will buy it, but then you've got, then you've got to get somebody to buy it that will do something positive to fix it up.
And so, they're valuing the historic nature of the district? You don't think that that's enough to value the neighborhood?
Well, I think if you want to try and do that with the yellow spots, and call that an historic district, that's fine, but I don't think the county courthouse is that way. You know, they're all complaining about this.
And all the way we take all of that into account.
This is an historic church incident, I mean, it's been here for years, you know, but they don't like the modern version of it. Well, you know, the church has to improve, you know, that's what's important, and that's what we should do.
It's not true.
Okay, well, good.
It's not.
But that's what I'm talking about.
Peter, I was going to ask the same question that Honey did, I'm not sure I heard the answer. What, and maybe you can be more specific, what specifically would you be interested in doing that this wouldn't let you do? And let me, at the same time, refer back to, you remember the Flinchums and Honey?
Yeah, let me be straight. I'm not interested in developing here, okay? Don't get me, I still like that, things that I got to do.
You're talking in general.
I'm talking in general, you know, that when you have a man in attitude, when you're, you know, as he said, if you get it in the right, and it's written down, and he can say, you know, that's, we leave, developers leave. But there will be somebody who will come in and come up with ideas, and, you know, what you want to foster is what people talk about, the Germantown, the historic area, you know, that's what you want to foster, but you don't necessarily have to put a law over everybody to do that.
I remember when the Flinchums, a little bit of gentrification over closer to the old county administration building, and I was really excited about that. I don't know how much that's continued, but it would be nice if it did. That was a long time ago.
Yeah, and again, you know, it's sad economic, you know, being a landlord's not the greatest job in the world.
No, actually, it was Randy Russell, wasn't it?
Yeah. But that's, again, things are changing.
So, could you see the overlay in several aspects, restoring, you know, historic neighborhoods, and then maybe outlined areas to incorporate, is what you're hoping you'd add?
I'm, you know, I'm not sure how you want to approach that, but I'm just saying, don't put the heavy hand to government on the property. If you want investment, don't put the heavy hand to government. If you want to chase away people who invest, you put government over there, they're going to head somewhere else.
Well, the people are looking to stabilize their neighborhood. They want to value the history, and this is what we're struggling to help them with.
Right, you know, but a lot of the issues that they've raised about, you know, the people who are trashing their neighborhood, that isn't, that's not a planning and zoning issue.
Exactly.
That's a police department issue.
Oh, well, how can they work out to stabilize neighborhoods from somewhere?
It's just like, I live in Central Beach, you know, we just have five burglaries in Central Beach, you know, that doesn't help the neighborhood either. You know, these things are, you know, you know, that's a police issue. So, you guys aren't going to solve that.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Please, somebody there raised your hand, yes, come.
Oh, I was just going to ask for a statement.
Yes, come on, I'm forward. You're welcome, this could also.
Hi, Anna Brady, my address is 1746 20th Court, and I am so glad that Mr. Waddell is here, and Mr. Robinson, and the neighbors as well. I'm a historic preservationist. I remember Mr. Robinson actually on the Neopar beach, I think when I was a little girl, at Rio Mar. Jackson's, I made a name.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Right fly.
And this is a workshop, so workshops are used, there is not coordinating, so we can all relax a little bit. The reason I said I'm glad you're here is because I've been a historic planner, I've worked in historic neighborhoods, and this is what happens. And Linda, Linda as well, these are issues that happen in historic districts. Asbestos siding, I know you might have some more information, we could talk about it later, but I know if it's not touched, it leaves with historic buildings. It's not harmful, so I don't want to scare everybody, you know, just don't lick it, and watch out for broken pieces as well. As far as insurance, that is a real challenge for encouraging people to rehab their historic buildings. I know the National Trust, on their website, the National Trust for Historic Preservation has some resources for historic homeowners. You know, and I encourage, whenever I'm talking to individuals who own historic homes, I encourage them to go, but that's going to take a real lobbying effort. And it's too bad, because they're considering homes that are just old, not even necessarily, when you say historic, doesn't mean they're necessarily historically significant and qualified for designation. They may just be old and have been altered inappropriately. So, being a native of Bear Beach, I feel really strongly about my town and city. This area where we are today, I hope that's not mine, that's already, this area where we are today, this is the city's oldest neighborhood. Bear is young, like you pointed out earlier, we've got people from all different areas of the country. And I want to hug that man, even though it would have been inappropriate when he got up to speak, because I had an example of somebody from another state, Ohio, that got it. He gets it. He came to this neighborhood and he saw what it could be. Now, I will say, we haven't been tied to our historic neighborhoods in Bear Beach. We've allowed a lot of conditional uses, so now, in this, and we've allowed a lot of demolitions. I think what I heard a lot of people saying today was, we have absentee landlords, abandoned streets, we do have incompatible zoning sometimes, in the sense that when you have a higher use zoning on a historic house that looks like a single-family home, that's pressure for that new owner to demolish that house and build something differently. So, from a historic standpoint, we say that's incompatible with the form of the house. Co-issues, we heard setbacks. I'm not real clear now, after this discussion tonight, on what you're proposing as far as the setbacks, but in historic areas, when you're trying to keep the historic character, you're trying to allow new construction that can fit into that similar construction as the historic, that street line. Sometimes they, I don't know what the original deed says, right now, I can't recall, it says in the state of Alabama, it said 20-foot setback from the front, from the street. And what is it now? Let's just say it was 20 historically, let's say it's 25 now. Well, some type of historic district or conservation district will allow somebody to come in that's building new construction and meet that 20-foot in order to keep that same historic character, historic view. Pardon me?
Contextual.
Contextual, so to speak. But I know that, like with the, you can just simply designate a district as a historic district or conservation district, and you can, when you come in with your application for new construction, you just apply for an exemption. And, you know, I mean, I have some background in planning, but I think in historic planning, we try to just make it a little more understandable and simple. Do you have a question?
You mentioned, in historic districts, you mentioned if they, if you had an unperforming use in building looks historic, it wasn't a single family, that if economically they could tear it down, can you in historic districts restrict the demolition of any historically designated building?
We have due process in our country.
Yes.
A board can vote, no one a demolition. And then, a private homeowner can appeal that demolition, there's an appeals process to the city commission. Depending on how strong that community wants to be in their, with their ruling, is what it depends on. There's a lot of laws they have to be careful of, and taking, and whatnot. So, I will say, I have a group of historic planners throughout the state of Florida that I talk to frequently, and they have a lot of demolitions in their historic districts. I'm not saying that's a wonderful thing to me, but it does happen. I think it's a misconception, people think they can't tear down a building. So, just moving on, when, and I don't know what your name was, again?
John.
John. And John, you're in the service, right?
Yes.
I just want to thank you very much for your service. You mentioned it was Germantown. I'm back at graduate school, at University of Florida, go Gators. And I'm getting a master's in historic preservation, working on that now. And all my professors are talking about case studies, case studies, right? And Robbie, you mentioned earlier, we shouldn't have, we don't need to reinvigorate, that's correct, we don't need to reinvigorate. I'm not sure exactly what the answer is to preserving the character here, because obviously, we do have to consider all the stakeholders. We know how we can do it, but in the end, we're never going to consider all the stakeholders. But, for solutions, there are case studies in Florida, in Lakeland, in West Palm Beach, in Delray, in Sarasota, that they may not be exactly like our community, there are some neighborhoods with similar architecture, similar problems, you know, developers also, development pressures, and these communities are work, you know, found a way to work together to come up with a solution. No solution is perfect. So, I do agree that perhaps in the end, that's what we're going to need to do as a community. I don't think, I don't see this paper as a lot of no's, I really don't. I know we're just trying to propose some solutions, this has been a long process, because we have the vision plan, what, way back in early 2003, 5, okay? And we have neighborhood plans, we have neighborhood community workshops, and meetings, lots of public meetings, and it's just hard, it's hard to get all the stakeholders there to express their opinions. So, now, this is about the comp plan, this is about putting policy in the comp plan, just so we can explore ways to protect the historic character of our cities, of our oldest city, oldest neighborhood. The whole community should be here tonight, and we think about city's oldest neighborhood, okay? Our downtown is coming back. I'm not going to say that it's going to be the place to be, but our county has grown, so there's a lot of different destinations throughout the county than in the city of Bear Beach. And I think we, you know, you can see it happening, you can see the downtown becoming a more popular spot. My concern is, I think it is getting more popular, and people are going to move here, but unfortunately, in my professional experience, they're not going to make a decision out of goodness of their heart to rehabilitate their historic building, so that they keep the architectural integrity of it. I know our community doesn't always support having a historic district, or, I don't know about conservation district, that's a lot, it's less of a regulation, but it may not protect that historic architecture. The only way I see doing that is having some sort of review process. But I think it'd be great to bring in the experts to explain that at a neighborhood workshop. Have people from other communities where it's worked for them come in and talk to the neighborhood. There's a lot of resources out there, and I'd be happy to help you locate some of those resources. If you have any questions, I'll have to answer.
I do, one of the overlay districts that was proposed is something called a conservation district, and it specifically talked about zoning laws, development to vary from specific regulations for zoning. And I think that, you know, that has a very positive connotation, because it seems it could satisfy, you know, both the neighborhoods that are interested in historic, a developer like Peter, the church that Jean Waddell is so concerned about. To me, it integrates an approach where people can live as good neighbors. And I'm just curious if you have any experience with that?
I really don't have much experience with conservation districts. They're typically used as buffers outside of a historic district, in between, you know, whatever is adjacent, because it's less of a regulation on the actual look of the historic house, they're not really talking about the architectural details of the house. And when I, when I say that, all historic districts are different, you're going to have a lot more regulation in charge. You're going to have a lot more regulation in Charleston, New Orleans, you know, whatever we would come up with here would need to get through a process. They could even start incentivizing with guidelines. Because again, I'm realistic about our community. And I think design guidelines are really important for people that buy these homes. Obviously, we did hear, you know, economic challenges, but there are wins in some situations too, where people tend to think they need to affect their house to fix it up, and they don't need to do that. Okay, sorry.
Part of the process in some historic districts is that if somebody's following the guidelines, they can find financial incentives to do that, in other words, money available from various sources, federal state, even locally, to do the kind of work to help the property. So a person buying the property would not, would have some financial assistance in modifying that property to, one, be more modern so that it will reduce the insurance cost to, you know, make it more compatible with the, you know, with the neighborhood. So I was wondering, in part of, you know, your studies, if you uncovered how people do that.
Yeah, again, it's a real challenge, and that's why we take us talking together as a solution. There's a tax abatement that we have as well, so you got, you can take the tax credit basically off the amount of improvements you put into that building for a period of 10 years. It's an application process that only needs to be designated, some savings. Some communities do have local grant programs, and that incentivizes people to maybe put on a more expensive roof. Perhaps the historically compatible roof might be a metal 5D print, but they can afford it. So there's always an economic hardship clause in the historic preservation ordinance. So they may say, well, we have this grant, instead of doing, just to ask all, if we could do that. But it's very much a challenge.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
There's something, there are other elements of community design that are not real complicated, that can make any community, historic district or any community, more neighborhood friendly, people friendly. And it's just simple things like educating people about how to prune, how to take care of, you know, the edge of the street, things like that. And it's not so much a heavy hand, where you come down and say, well, my neighbor's, you know, horrible, can't do this and that. But if you take the other tack and say, we're going to have monthly meetings to teach people how we can get eyes on the street, how, you know, some good ways to create a consistent look on our street. And one person puts a tree, and the next couple of months, hey, somebody else plans to start putting trees. You know, you start getting people getting on the bandwagon. I just know, I've seen, I've been in Florida for 36 years, not in Vera the whole time, but I've watched communities like Mount Dora. And, I mean, when I moved here, I can remember going to Mount Dora and thinking, I would never go there. It was a cute little downtown, one street, that was it, but I wouldn't go anywhere else. But now you go there, and it's, you know, it's Orlando's vacation on the weekend, so they all go. And, but it took a lot of time, a lot of work, a lot of talking with all the stakeholders. And I just think, and I'm a Gator too, I took a lot of planning classes and historic preservation classes as well. And there are some grad students looking for work, looking for projects, looking to come in and spend hours with people, I mean, they knew that, I didn't. There's a lot of good resources that we can tap into. So I think, thinking of this as a workshop, as a process, and not expecting all the answers coming from us, or we're going to, you know, we're going to recommend the city council, this is the way you guys should have to live. And, I mean, that's not going to happen, it's just not going to happen, Vera wants to. So, I appreciate you stepping forward because I think it's just so obvious to us that there are so many good resources right here in town.
Yeah, and it's not going to happen naturally as far as, when you're talking about preserving the historic character of that neighborhood. Look, we haven't had controls there, and look what's happened. Can't afford to lose anymore of that historic architecture if you want to preserve the unique character of that neighborhood. And it is, it's an economic uniqueness that was created over several decades. You can't recreate that with new construction. I'm not saying that new construction can't be done there and complement the neighborhood well, because I think it can, and it's done all over this nation, and it's done well. So, a lot of potential, but if we wait too long to put protections in place, it's not going to be there anymore.
Anyone else that you speak, again? How many more people would like to speak down with, on more?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, 10 day, 1846 21st Avenue. My father's had been part of this process for a long time. When the visions first, I call it the first visions workshop started. And there's other people in this room that have been part of that. And the first thing I wanted to address, the comments that the chairman made about when he heard about some of these rundown properties, and about the residents going over to the folks there knocking on their doors and things of that nature. I would really caution people on doing that. When we've had our crime watch get-togethers, the police always encourage us, if there are problems in the neighborhood, especially if there's serious problems, get with the police, do follow-up calls with the code. That's really very important. Because, Mr. Chairman, sir, a lot of these rundown properties that have many people in them, living there that are very illegally, there's a lot of very bad illegal activity that takes place in these residents. And I'm not talking about like the multiple unit that you own, the bigger apartment building. Most of the folks that own those large units do take care of their properties, they do screen their tenants, and usually they have someone on site taking care of the property, overseeing it. What you mainly heard a lot in this room tonight, and we have a lot of similar problems, is what I call the single resident units that have been changed over, illegal uses, the list is lengthy. We've been battling this for over 10 years. Over 10 years. Calling the police, doing this, doing that. I have a suggestion, if you as a PMZ board, and even for this neighborhood and our neighborhood, maybe with part of the overlay district, and this is for the single residents, not folks like Mr. Lawford that own the bigger units, but for the single residents or those rental units or the smaller duplexes, the small units. We could do some type of occupational license because you could build in the rules and regulations. Let me give you an example. In our zone, we live off the 21st Avenue, we are allowed to operate a business out of our home, but we must have an occupational license. And when we receive that occupational license, there's rules and guidelines that we must follow. And if we go outside those guidelines, well, then the city gets a hold of us, and they could give us a chance to correct it, or they do give you a chance to correct it. If you don't, they pull your license, and you no longer can operate your particular business out of your home. And, or they call it a tax, now we used to call it an occupational license. And the fee for that could be very tiny. The idea is to have it, and if you want to operate, you must have it. You could do it for like, you know, what Mr. McGary come up with, a very, very low fee. So that is maybe a solution to some of these properties that are really a bad disrepair. And with that being said, I've discovered here in the last, I guess, year and a half to two years, some of these properties that are running a lot of folk out of the homes, sometimes they rent the property, actually rents for a lot of money. But what they're doing is they're running a lot of illegal activity out of those homes. I'm not going to go into all those activities, because I do take the time to find out what's going on, following police reports and all. With the city's budget cutbacks that they've been working on over the last number of years, a lot of the patrols in these older neighborhoods, especially here on the mainland, have been cut back. They just don't have the funding any longer to run the patrols like they were doing in the past. So that does add to the problems. Now, our response time here is still very quickly, but our patrols have been limited. So therefore, at nighttime, if you, I'm not going to recommend this, but for some folk that go out and walk these areas, or check them out, or ride a bike, or whatever, you do see more things on foot or riding a bike, and you do notice this type of activity. What you're hearing here tonight, as a PMZ board, is the folks in the original town are looking for their neighborhood to be stabilized. And they're looking to you all as the leaders, doing this to help them, to give them some suggestions as far as what can they stabilize. Mr. McGary has put together a plan, it has taken a long time, a lot of input has gone into it. Now, we heard from local developers, they're both very successful developers, and a very successful real estate individual that came up today, gave us another side of the story of kind of what they're looking for as far as they don't want overlays to encroach on how they make money, you know, with the business community. So what we're going to have to do as neighborhoods is figure out how we can work together. And the point that I want to make to the developers is, we don't have too much left in these neighborhoods. So what we're trying to do is hold on to what we have, figure out how to stabilize them out. We've been working on this a really long, long time. In some of these areas over here in the mainland, we have a lot of nonprofits. Now, they're allowed to be here because of zoning at the times that have permitted them. What we were concerned with, if you keep having more and more nonprofits come into your neighborhoods because the zoning allows it, you're not going to have any more houses or residents left, meaning renters too. So just bear that in mind, you know, the stuff is, we don't have that much left. Just like Mrs. Brady was saying, is how can we protect what we have left? That's what we're looking to do. So I think if we all figure out kind of how to work together, nobody wants to step on anybody's toes. And I want to make it real crystal clear to the folks in the development business and business community, what we're looking for in our neighborhoods, again, stabilize them out where we can live and work. We want other people to come in into our neighborhoods, buy homes. If you look at our downtown area, in the last four or five years, it has really taken off. We have a beautiful arts district, we have restaurants. If you go into the restaurants and you talk to some of the servers, they're doing quite well, you know, as far as their paychecks, where they're able to meet their obligations. It's on an upswing. We have to do other things, and I, and we, my wife and I have been talking, you know, we wanted to hear from the real estate community, I'm very thankful that this lady stepped forward. You know, what else is it going to take from the real estate state point of view to get people to come into our neighborhoods? Mr. Lawford, you spoke about if you're going to invest, or who have investors, what they're looking for to invest if they come to the neighborhood. So I think that's positive. I think, I'm hoping, as this moves forward with the workshops, we can do some type of overlay. And the overlay for the developers in the room is to allow us to have some protections in place to protect the residents that are there. Because the two, most of the people that have come up here have been here forever. And they understand, you know, what it takes to have a community, you have to have places for people to live. And I think, to be honest with you, I think things are on an upswing. And I like to look at things in the positive. I think more people are coming here, they want to live here, they want to stay here, and they want to work here. I talked to a lot of folk between the ages of 30 and 45. They want to stay here, they want to live here, they want to buy houses here, they want to rent here. And they're looking for places to settle. So, thanks, and all your stage tonight, I had some more comments, but I'm going to cut it off here so maybe you're getting tired. But thank you for your service, thank you for what you do for our community. Thank you very much.
Deborah, dating in 1846 21st Avenue. I think there's been some confusion, and I might involve a gentleman generally, that we talked about as a small section of the whole, not all of the original town?
Yeah. And actually, there may be more than one overlay. I mean, I think, and I think one of the things that came out of this, the policy, we need to concentrate somewhere on the incentive part of it that I did go into, that I talked about, but it's not in there, and that was clear. I mean, what we're doing, the overlay I brought up about the doubs, let's say, was really just to stabilize, to prevent further intrusion. But we need to really also emphasize the incentives we would like to, for redevelopment and that. And I, my philosophy with regulations, really incentive regulations. You do this, we'll let you do this, you're going to, but you're going to have to do it, you know, maintain the style in the neighborhood. So, but I think we need to look at that, so I hope that clarifies a little. I think we need to get a little more detail in there.
Which is why I'm back with these workshops and what it's about. But the other thing too was, in tying off of the crime watch idea, I've never really been fond of our code, the way we do our code here. I don't like turning in a neighbor, I don't like seeing something that I have to complain about. I would never like that. And it actually prevents us sometimes from calling, I don't think we should have to do that. I think it's easier if you are a landowner or a property owner in a neighborhood you don't live in, to perhaps you see things not quite right, it's easier for you maybe to call because you're not living there amongst your neighbors. So it's a little bit tougher when you've got to call your neighbor. So it doesn't really develop camaraderie, you turn each other in. I am hoping in the future that we can develop some kind of plan where, code used to do more of this, we used to actually have a code enforcement officer, part of the police force, where you could, when you drive by, you see the grass is too high, you give a warning. I mean, instead of the neighbor having to call the person in. So there were, there's other things I think we can do that's a little more friendly, you know, for the neighbors. And maybe we'll talk more as opposed to being worried about turning each other in. And back to the fact that, if I'm not mistaken, also, original town is residential first, most of it?
No, the original town of Vera.
I mean, there was a business district and there was residential. Which, I mean, as far as this section within this original town, is that like a business district or is it down or?
Well, that's not even the right map anyway. So that's, I don't want to confuse everybody.
All right, so the point I'm.
Another workshop will have that map, that original flat.
I think that would answer a lot of questions too, because I think a lot of people, what's already there is there. I mean, there's not much we can go backwards. So I think we ought to be, again, as far as the stabilization of the homes that are, the people are there now that they want to maintain, that they want to keep, that's the idea, is how can we hold on to what we've got? You know, what help can we get in there? And again, I like the idea of, I'd like to, we've been talking about this anyway, because as we're paying down on our house, our insurance is more than the mortgage. I mean, when we first bought the home, now see, we bought over here, so it's not like $300,000 worth of our house. But in the neighborhood we bought, we wouldn't be in that neighborhood if homes weren't that much money. But back then in 95, it was $500 for shirts, you know, in the house. Now it's over $5,000. So I mean, it's ridiculous, and it's because, well, you've got an old house. Forget the fact that it lives through Wilman, Frank Francis, Gene, Hurricane David, you know, whatever else, it's still here. It's better built in some of the newer homes, but inside the walls, it's diagonal framing. It's got tie-downs, it's got the attic access as far as the house breathing and such. So I mean, it's just, it's interesting. So a lot of this has to do with education, and again, the preservation commission, you know, from the city of Vera Beach has talked about the idea of educating. And I think it wouldn't hurt for us to figure out how to, everyone was talking about this, too, thinking about this, how would we approach the insurance industry? You know, as far as, getting, you know, changing some thought there, as far as the older homes are not necessarily, you know, ready to fall down in a storm or, or just because it's old, it should be insured more. I mean, so there's, I'm taking on some of the gentleman's, so. But, so I'm glad for the workshops, and I hope that, in fact, it probably wouldn't hurt if we had some kind of, even if we could find a large table to that, you know, for the ones who come, and be able to address each other a little more comfortably. And I think we managed to be able to. But I appreciate the time, and I'm looking forward to taking this further.
Can I ask more things to think about?
We're talking about this one little area we're trying to bear with, original town, that's not, and how our original town started, and I know this has started in our neighborhood. I'm sure the business interests and other stakeholders too. It's hard to talk about that one section of town without thinking about the whole. So we also need to think about the whole, we can't just.
So we also need to think about the whole, we can't just, you know, when we're thinking about development in that area, it might turn into working together about the whole plan.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
I just want to say thank you for everyone, to everyone for, you know, the quality, it's been very productive. I think-
I think at this point in time, we're going to conclude our meeting. We have, on a formal agenda, we have, is there any planning matters?
No, the plan register's tired.
No, no, we're, we're not officially, thank you.